That's, we have researched that issue before and that is not allowed for the school board.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm curious about my colleague's position on the minimum requirement. For... So, minimum qualifications, the third bullet point, experience with education and/or school law. In the vein of trying to widen the pool of people, we're looking at replacing that with, you know, government and policy. You know, I understand the importance of having education and school law experience. I also understand that a lot of what our general counsel currently advises us on includes more of like a government and policy role. So I'd be curious to know where my colleagues are on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Zeeman?
Could I defer to maybe attorneys that serve on the school board about that last comment from Ms. Leonardi? Would it be worth having a conversation about that specific? Or do you want to just go around the table?
We can do it any way you'd like. Ms. Batista, do you have any insight into what, to kick us off on a debate?
Well, that's an interesting question. I mean, needless to say, you know, the more the attorney is prepared with knowledge relevant to K through 12 and education law, the better they're going to be able to, you know, they're more nimble, they're going to be about responding to questions and responding to whatever changes in the law and other things that may be happening in education, which they do constantly. You know, is it impossible to just have like a, you know, basically be a good lawyer that can think on their feet and can reason through a problem and then learn the law related to school law? Of course, you know, that can happen.
Okay, anybody on the point Ms. Mrs. Leonardi brought up? Mrs. Bowman?
So, thanks Chair. Ms. Batista, can you explain the difference between education law and school law for everybody?
Sure.
Because there is a distinction between those.
So, school law would be K through 12 strictly, you know, some information or experience related to K through 12. Education law talks about all the different areas that encompass what education law is, which is very broad. Just like any large corporation, we do construction law, we do education, labor and employment, we do First Amendment. I mean, which is, you know, something unique, but we do, in addition to that, which will be more of the K through 12 arena, is the ESC concept of, you know, special education. That's experience that you would only have if you have done K through 12 practice, you know, in legal practice in K through 12. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, because I think it's... It's a broader scope when you're saying
Yes.
education law versus school law. That's a, you can come with a...
Right, it encompasses procurement, construction, employment, everything.
Do, um, do we have people, and I appreciate that you guys put this together, in the, that are currently employed that have, I mean, just based on the report that you gave, we have people that have pretty extensive experience with ESC and specific school law already employed in the legal department?
They are currently employed in the legal department. Ms. Hofstadter has substantial experience in that arena. She is relocating at the end of this year and so we have Giselle Lemay who just started with us. She has approximately three months' experience, but she's picking up quickly and it's, you know, she's doing really well. So that would be the person that would be doing that work.
Thanks. So we have some in-house knowledge of
Yes.
that specific topic. Is that just to Ms. Leonardi's point? That's the question then?
Yes, we're just talking about Mrs. Leonardi's point of, well, two parts, I guess. One about the having Florida, oh, no, that's right, that's right. We couldn't change that. Yes, so it's about whether we want to keep in there about the education or school law. Mrs. Alhada?
So I like how in the backup material, how Chicago did it, they wrote a minimum of seven years of progressively responsible managerial experience in law firms, corporate law offices, educational institutions, government or public agencies, nonprofit organizations or related organizations. I think that really opens up the pool and obviously if they have educational experience in law, then it's going to give them an edge in within the process, but I like to broaden the scope. I think it will bring us, have more options for us, you know, and it could be a goal of them to, in their time here, possibly go for the educational law certification through the state as a goal.
Did you want to make a motion?
I think we're still in discussion.
Want to, wait, oh, Mrs. Bowman?
Yeah, I have that highlighted too. So I think, I think, I like the Fairfax, first of all, I appreciate that you guys added these because that was very helpful to have a broad scope and to go outside the state as well. So thank you. I think a recurring theme through all the descriptions is a knowledge of litigation, which I think is really important, both for managerial and just to understand how the process works when you're looking to... If you have litigation experience, then you can kind of go backwards. If you are, do not have litigation experience, it's going to be more difficult to understand what's happening and to manage that kind of a process. I mean, basically impossible and we don't need anyone learning on the job for that. So I think in addition to the scope of work, that our candidates should definitely have litigation experience as Ms. Batista does.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mrs. Alhada?
So I move to add to the minimum qualifications, minimum of seven years of progressively responsible managerial experience in law firms, corporate law offices, educational institutions, government or public agencies, nonprofit organizations or related organizations.
Second, would you want to strike the other one?
Do you want to?
Would you, yep, to replace the other bullet with 10 years.
Well, there's two bullets.
And did you want to move that one to preferred or just strike it all together?
The experience with education and our school law, are you, do you, do you want to get rid of that altogether or move it down to preferred?
I'm open to what my colleagues would like to do.
Okay, so let's finish with the first motion and then we'll make a second one.
Can I just get clarification on the motion? Is it a replication of the Chicago?
Yes.
Word for word?
Yes.
Okay, and, and it would, and, and your, your motion was silent so far and we might take that up on a subsequent motion about doing something with the others.
Yeah, do it separate.
Great, thank you. I like this a lot.
Yeah, Mrs. Leonardi seconded the motion. So we're discussing it. Dr. Holness?
Are we on the education and school law or are we on the seven years managerial?
We're on the motion that Mrs. Alhada...
So that's the seven year managerial, okay. I'm waiting for the school law, so I don't have any comments.
Okay. Anybody else on the motion?
I just want to be clear though, what we're voting on is the Chicago language, but seven years of practice, not 15. That's the only difference. I'm sorry?
It's the exact same language in the Chicago one, the last bullet or the last sentence.
Well, the last sentence, not the first one.
Okay, then I have a comment. I thought we were doing above there where it says 15 and one or more of the following, large law firm, government agency, private school district, university, nonprofit, litigation, admin, law, contracts, negotiation, real estate, you know, that whole list. When you said earlier that you like what it says in Chicago, I thought that that, the clause before that was the one that you were talking about. The one at the bottom, I'm sorry, would that, and, and that would replace the minimum of 10 years of progressive bullet?
Correct.
Terrific, thank you.
I, I have a comment. So in the, the one that, the bullet that we're looking at, it's really just talking about the, the progressive responsibility of work. It isn't directly related to being licensed. So that's what we're focusing on right now. Is that correct, Mrs. Alhada? Okay. So, okay, everybody clear on that? So it's the last bullet in the Chicag, or the last sentence in Chicago and it's to replace only about progressively more responsible work in related, ours says in related fields of the title position. This spells it out more, basically. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. That motion carries. Okay, Mrs. Bowman?
So to poach, and we're very happy to have the work done by the other counties, there are other school districts. I also like the language in the Fairfax, which provides for a 10-year, for 10 years of experience in public or private practice with litigation expertise in one or more of the following areas, constitution, student rights, education, employment, civil ri, student rights, civil rights, real estate, local government procurement, contract or tort law.
So would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to add that as well. So I don't, I mean, I think...
Do you want to replace something with that?
Yeah, I think that maybe we would like replace experience with education and/or school law and put...
Do we want to have, you want to have the 10 years in that sentence?
Yeah, I think we, I think we should have 10 years of practice experience.
Okay.
Amendment, do you want to add school to education in that Fairfax description? They don't have school law, they just have education law?
Yeah, if we want, I mean, I don't think there's a...
Your motion. We're replacing school or education in the third bullet?
I think, see, the thing is, is if we're saying in one of, in one or more of the following areas, I don't think just school law is going to get the job done for us for like the broad scope of the candidate, like what they need to understand, it would, that might be easier to...
And to my knowledge, school, Ms. Batista, is a subset of education law? Terrific, thank you. I love the motion.
Second, Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if we're going to adopt the Fairfax language, I'd like to get Ms. Batista's input because it says in one or more of the following areas. So we could hire someone in one area and has no experience in the others. I just want to make sure that we're actually wording everything the right way so we can get the most competent person at the same time broadening the pool of applicants. So if Ms. Batista could weigh in based on the language that says in one or more of the following, so if we get a candidate in one of the following, is there any parts of this that is relevant as a minimum qualification that is, you would say would be mandatory to have or essential to have?
Ms. Batista?
Essential to have. Well, student rights and education, you know, student rights, it's, I would say student rights, FERPA, ESC and contract review are the areas that we have the most volume in our, in our office. So, of course, you know, if you're going to be looking at the current needs of the district, which by the way, they have fluctuated throughout the, you know, three decades that I've been here, right now is more of a redefining and construction-related real estate type of law. So, I would, you know, if you could say, instead of saying in one or more of the following areas, if you wanted to have, if the person should have, you know, some experience in two or more of the areas.
Okay, so, so Ms. Batista, I, I hear you, but I also heard you say that in, based on the volume of work that you've done in Broad County, it would be areas such as ESC, contract review, FERPA, those are areas that are essential, right? That, those are not in here. So I'm trying to...
Well, I think under, maybe under student rights or, you know, education, that would definitely, definitely capture that.
Okay, so then it, we could end up hiring someone in two of the following areas that exclude student rights and education. So I'm trying to ascertain what exactly is absolutely needed that we know for sure we're including that in the job description, based upon your experience and your suggestion. So the more would be a very general term that could basically include any two of the following without necessarily including the two that you consider essential. So do you consider student rights and education essential and would, would, would those cover your prior comment about ESC and FERPA, contract review?
I do. However, if you're, what your aim is to open up the pool, if you're going to then mandate that they have student rights and education experience, then kind of you're going back to narrowing the pool.
Okay, so here's my, my subsequent question. If these are essential, could we include in the minimum requirement that, that these are, if they don't have these, that there's a timeline to which they acquire that knowledge through some kind of, I don't know, course or whatever is required in that area? At least some basic knowledge of it, right? Because if they come in without that knowledge at all and they don't have any real incentive to go get that knowledge because we didn't state it here, then that could impact the level to which they're able to do this job.
Well, if you hire someone that doesn't have a particular area of expertise and has no intention or desire to make, you know, do the training and make themselves knowledgeable in that area, then I would say you hired the wrong person.
Right, right. But, but instead of waiting for them to elect that option, could we make sure they do it?
We add it to their contract.
Add it to their contract, so... Okay, all right. My last question, I, I just think it's essential that we, we don't rely on a person to say we're going to do this, that in some form or way we make sure they do it. And the other question I have, Ms. Batista, is, is there anything in the, any added information that you think is relevant, either in the preferred qualification or the minimum qualification that we somehow did not include?
Ms. Batista?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I think that it contains all the necessary areas.
Okay, so I'll have, I think I would want more comments on adding those essential requirements to the contract, how that works and so on.
Mr. Sever?
Thank you, Chair, and, and obviously I have quite a few comments on this, but I want to focus on, on the motion that's pending before, before us right now. First and foremost, I, I understand this, this language here about the 10-year experience and I understand kind of its intent. However, I, I think the real world application could have some problems and here's why. This basically says you have to have 10 years' experience in one or more, and then it lists a laundry list of items that I think are important and that any general counsel representing a school board should have. However, the way that this is written as is, is again, one or more. So presumably if someone comes in, like myself, right, obviously I wouldn't run, but I'm just giving my, giving it a real world example, who has more than 10 years' experience in real estate law, both transactional real estate and litigation in real estate, I would check that box. I don't think that I'm qualified to be the general counsel of the Broward County School Board despite the fact that I've checked this box. You also have here contract or tort law. There's a very, 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 very large contingent of members of the Florida bar who can say that they have 10 years' experience in contract law and the same thing with tort law. And that doesn't mean that, you know, I want John Morgan to be the general counsel of the Broward County School Board despite his years and years of experience in tort law, right? So I understand the point of this, of this category here, but I think when you're limiting it to one or more to, to, to check a box to see if somebody's qualified, I, I think it has to be a little tighter. I think it has to be inclusive of some of these areas that to me are a must, right? Local government experience, education law. I, I mean, I don't realistically see how we bring anybody into this post who doesn't have substantial experience in education law. Period, full stop. You can't do it. And, you know, same thing to go, same thing with, with the civil rights stuff and the constitutional stuff. Having a firm grasp on, I don't know, let's say like the First Amendment, I think is extremely important for a general counsel's position. And if you don't have that experience, I don't think, I, I don't think you should be considered. So I, I would, I want to obviously give my, my colleagues the opportunity to continue with this conversation, which I think is an important one on this area, but certainly having the language as is from, from Virginia that just says one or more, I, I don't think that's enough because one could be, hey, I'm a, I'm a 10-year practitioner in real estate law. I checked that box, I'm qualified according to this minimum qualification that's on this application, right? It's, it's, it's not enough. Chair, may I ask a question from Ms. Batista? Is there a mechanism in place in which an interim in-house general counsel would be appointed in the event that we have not selected our full, the full-time position on the last day of Ms. Batista's employment with the district?
We're actually going to discuss that in, later on in this discussion.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is, is an important one. I was not part of this board when the last decision was made on who the general counsel was going to be. In talking to some people, it's my understanding that we had some difficulty with getting people to fill the, the minimum qualifications, which I get. However, and I'm not suggesting by any stretch of the imagination that we didn't make the right decision by hiring Ms. Batista. I think, I think it was a good one for the district. But my concern is, I don't want this attitude of, we've got to have these really loose qualifications to attract this giant applicant pool because we know when Ms. Batista's leaving and we have to have this position filled. I don't want that pressure on us. This needs to be narrowly tailored. We are the sixth largest school district in the entire country unless something has changed recently. I don't think it has. I want the best, I want the brightest and I want the people, I want a, a person who's going to come in and is going to serve this, this district well. And if that hap, if, if that search takes a little while, I'm okay with that as long as obviously we're, you know, we're properly protected. And, and I think knowing that we've got someone within house right now that can step up into an interim role just like when a, you know, when a coach leaves, right? You have the interim head coach, which the Dolphins are definitely in need of an interim head coach right now. We need an interim head coach, right, to come in and step in. So if this process takes two, three, four, six months, I want to make sure we are getting the best person for this job and we are not feeling rushed because, oh my God, Ms. Batista's leaving on, on such and such day, we have got to make this decision, we have to have these loosey-goosey standards to let everybody in and we'll have a pool applicant of 75 people, you know, once a week coming in. I don't want that. I want excellence, I want perfection, I want the best and the brightest, and I don't want to feel rushed into making a decision because there isn't a mechanism for having someone come in and step up in her absence, which is why I asked the question.
Mrs. Alhada? Dr. Zeeman?
Chair, are we discussing this motion in particular or the general topic?
We're still on the motion.
I, I'm starting to recognize kind of the interplay between the qualifications and other parts of the job description and the process that we go through to get somebody and I know the process is going to come up subsequent to this, but I'd like to have as broad of a minimum standard as we can. I think the people who don't have any experience in student or education law would be ill-advised to apply, but they could. And it could be that there's a rock-solid person that has been doing litigation because you make a lot of money doing that forever and they want to have a second job in a school district and they're such an incredibly great lawyer that they become a candidate. So I like this motion, I think it makes sense, and I think that while it does allow more people to apply, the salary in this position doesn't really encourage people to leave private practice to come back and do this and, and I think we're going to be okay and I look forward to talking more about, you know, once we've settled on the job description, you know, how we're going to do the process. And Chair, when we're done with this item, I do have a change to the job description recommend when there's time.
Okay, Mrs. Bowman?
Thank you. So just based on what Dr. Holness is questioning, I don't have a problem with adding two or more of the division. I mean, I think, and to speak to Mr. Severa, I, everybody wants the best attorney here, but I think that John Morgan's not leaving his law firm to come apply for this job. I, I'm pretty confident of that. So I mean, when you're looking at who's actually going to apply, I, the purpose of this is that we do have maybe people that we wouldn't be capturing because it's so narrowly tailored and then when we get the applications, we'll decide whether or not they have any business being here. Because managerially, we might really benefit from somebody that has a different background. Because we do have a team that's already in-house as well that has knowledge of the various areas that we have. I, to the point that Ms. Batista made earlier though too, like what we're focusing right now based on redefining and things that are happening, I do think we should add construction law to that laundry list of potential, of areas of expertise because we're going to be dealing with construction and then obviously we have a lot of real estate issues as well. So I, I would amend, and I, and Ms. Batista, is tort law really an issue? Like is that something that we, that you deal with?
Right, that currently the tort law area is, is mostly handled by outside counsel through risk management and not through my office.
Okay, so we might not need tort law?
Well, I mean, I don't know if you don't need it. I think you need some knowledge of it, you know? I mean, usually when the district is sued and in handling, you know, litigation on behalf of the district for 20 years, I know that the plaintiffs tend to put in, you know, maybe like a federal cost of action and then some state causes of action based on, on tort, infliction of emotional distress, you know, whatever. So you do, you do need some, some tort, not tort law knowledge, but I wouldn't say that that's the...
The primary?
The primary at all, yeah.
Okay. So I guess for, to my colleagues, do we want to narrow it to at least two of those areas? Or do you want to keep it at one? And I'd like to, I would just like to add construction to there. I think that that would be another area that we would benefit from. And then what, so I, I'm just amending my motion to add construction.
And to change one to two?
No, I don't think everyone kind of shook their head on that one.
Okay.
I think most of us are...
You want two? Okay, then we'll add two.
So two or more and then contract, tort or construction.
And this will allow us to get more applications, and then we can, you know, if 90% of them don't qualify and we don't think they're going to do a good job and they don't have any business being there, we won't move forward.
Mrs. Lee and Artie, do you second the changes in the?
Yes.
Okay. So we're still on the motion. Just amended, tweaked a little. Mrs. Leonardi?
Thank you. And I agree, I support the motion. I agree with Ms. Bowman. I think everyone up here wants to hire the best candidate. None of us are here, I think, to say we want to hire a mediocre general counsel. We want, I think we all want what's best for this district and for this board. And part of that is hiring an excellent general counsel. I think it's important, maybe for those of us who are not here, the last time we did the general counsel search, to go back and review the documents and the meetings from when we did do a general counsel search back in the summer of 2021. We really limited ourselves in the candidates that we had options with because of a very narrow job description. The job description has changed a little bit, but having been through that process before, I think it's really important that we give ourselves a broad pool of candidates. I think we are all intelligent enough and we all have the values to say, you know, this person certainly qualifies, but maybe isn't best for this district. That's how this process works. So I support the motion. I really come from, having done this before and having been really limited with, I think, we got to the point where we only had two options, and one person walked away from us because of a contract issue. I think being able to look at everyone who qualifies, who might bring something unique to the position is really, really important. So that's where I'm operating from. And then, are we discussing the job description? Or are we discussing, like, the timeline right now?
Just on the job description.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to do this in pieces.
Got it. Thank you.
This is minimum qualification.
Yes. So I will, I like the motion, and I'll reread it again just to make sure we're all on the same line. But I, to Mr. Severa's point and to Ms. Leonardi's point, we do want to cast a wider net of people. But so I, when we get there, I would rather move where it says "experience with education" in our school law, not get rid of it completely, but move it down to "preferred qualification." So I'll make that motion. I don't mind broadening the minimum qualifications. But I think in "preferred," to Mr. Severa's point, you'd want to say our preference is that you have this education and/or school law. But for minimum qualifications to broaden the net, I don't mind adding all of those other pieces to it. So just before I move on, so Ms. Rupert has what we're saying out loud to everyone. The motion is to add to minimum qualifications and experience, 10 years of experience in public or private practice with litigation expertise in two or more of the following areas, the Constitution, student rights, education, employment, civil rights, real estate, local government, procurement, contract, tort, or construction.
Construction law.
Construction law. Sorry. So that is the amended motion.
And Chair, just to be clear, is it to replace the 10 years, or to replace
Experience?
At least for now, experience with education or school law?
Correct.
Okay, so the whole motion is that, to replace the third bullet under minimum qual? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I am. I am. We're still on Ms. Mrs. Bowman's
Can we just keep it there and add this, and then make your motion on that?
No, we can't, I don't think, because it's really defining the experience in a different way.
Well, I mean, I think, we could amend the motion one more time and just add to the motion to move what's there, to experience, to make this easier, maybe. I think Mrs. Alhada's concern is if we remove it, then the motion wouldn't be to move it because we just removed it. That's the point she's trying to make. So if we added to the motion that we're going to, we're going to put your motion there and move experience to preferred, I think that would solve, that would do it all in one
Okay, can I talk? Go ahead. I don't agree with that. I think that the experience with education or school law, we're saying experience, we're not saying to be certified in educational law. That is paramount to be in this job description as a minimum qualifications. I'm, yeah. It needs to stay there, in minimum qualifications. We're not saying to be certified in educational law, which we've had in the past, which when then restricted us because there's only 65 people in the state or whatever, that is actually certified in educational law. We're not saying that. We're just saying experience.
We'll leave it where it is. Go ahead, Mrs. Bowman.
Okay, so it said, in this, it says "education." So that's education law. So what are we? I'm a little confused, because education law is in there. I mean, I guess we could add school law into this.
We already talked about that.
Or no?
You had that discussion. You decided you didn't, that school law was incorporated into education.
Well, I'm just confused about what we're doing.
Mrs. Bowman's motion is to replace the experience with education and/or school law with the sentence that I just read.
Yeah.
That's her motion.
And if you don't want to do that, you can vote against the motion.
Correct. Okay. Ms. Dr. Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think that, I guess where my thought is, is it's important that we don't water this down. I know that, I think there's a fine balance in getting a floodgate of candidates and a limited number of candidates. And I'm not sure which one we're achieving here today. So I know that Board Member Severa mentioned interim. And so, Ms. Batista, do we have anyone in-house capable of serving as an interim? Should we not be able to?
Dr. Holmes, we're going to talk about this in a later spot. So I don't think it's appropriate to have that discussion right now. Because it has nothing to do with the job description, whether someone can serve as an interim or not.
Well, the reason I'm asking, Madam Chair, is because my vote on this is also contingent on that. Because I don't want us to water this down where we have a floodgate of candidates that don't meet the qualification, when we could also entertain the idea, if I know we have someone qualified as an interim and I can make a better decision as to what I include in the job description, as opposed to getting a floodgate of candidates that don't qualify. So that's the reason for my question. So my question is contingent on how I'll vote.
I understand that sort of, but we're going to have a discussion about interim and whether we're going to go out for an interim or look in-house. So I think it's, I don't know.
Right, but I'm not asking if we're going to go out or not. I'm just simply asking if
I know, but that, it clouds the second discussion about what we do for an interim.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, it's okay. But by you objecting, me having an answer to that question, I will not be able to make an informed decision on what we're talking about.
I just don't, I personally
I get it, but I'm saying that information is relevant to my decision-making. Because I don't want to, I don't want to have a floodgate of candidates come in as opposed to a limited number of candidates. If I know that we don't have anyone in-house who could possibly take the role, then I could make a different decision.
I'm going to let Dr. Lozano answer your questions, so, Ms. Batista.
My staff has done some research, and it looks like we do have an internal candidate that's willing to step into the interim role at this time, if needed.
That is my question, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Bowman?
So I think, you know, on this language, again, it does cover, I think the concern is covered in this. Once we look at, this is a job description. So it has, I think it checks all the boxes that we need. And then we will review the resumes, and then we'll decide whether or not somebody qualifies or they have the experience that we want. I mean, I think, so we're kind of getting a little too detailed, I think, at this point. And in terms of a floodgate of applicants, I mean, sure, we might be getting that, but again, and I think, you know, I don't see a lot of people leaving a lucrative private practice to come take this job necessarily unless they're in a certain place in their career. They have, you know, so I don't think there's going to be, like, 5 million applicants for this. I think it's, I think we're, you know, I think that this is going to be a limited, and then we're going to have a limited number of people that we actually want to talk to. Because any, you know, someone with construction law might apply. Well, that really doesn't have any knowledge of the rest of this. It's not really going to be someone that we're going to want to even necessarily interview. So that's going to be up to us. We just have to have a broad enough job description so that we can capture anyone that might be in those categories. And, you know, with the concern about the education and the school law, we've got Constitution, student rights, civil rights, education. I think that captures the different areas that would apply to school and, I mean, education law is in there specifically. And then the school law applies a lot of those other things, so.
Mrs. Alhada?
Do we have to put school law in there to add that to the list?
Ms. Batista said it was incorporated in education.
Okay. And then, just being picky, do we have to write the word "law" after all of those, Constitution laws, students' rights law, educational law?
Ms. Batista?
It seems that the intent was that by having the word "law" at the end of the last designation, that that would apply to each and every one. It would be Constitution law, student rights law, educational law. But just putting it at the very end, after, well, in this case, it says "tort law." You could say "tort law" and/or, you know, "construction law." That would apply, the law would apply to all the other ones.
Great.
But would it make it stronger, putting the word "law"?
I mean, I'm pretty sure they understand that this is about the law.
Okay.
We give the "law" at the end of
Okay.
Of which one?
For, for "construction law."
Yeah.
We get rid of "law" there.
It's a lawyer that we're looking for.
Yep.
Okay. So just to be clear, because for the minutes, that was we're doing. It would say 10 years of experience in public or private practice with litigation expertise in two or more of the following areas, the Constitution, student rights, education, employment, civil rights, real estate, local government, procurement, contract, tort, or construction law. All those in favor of the motion?
Chair, I apologize. I just caught this. And I just want to make sure we're crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is. Ms. Batista, if I'm remembering this correctly, you can only identify yourself as an expert or claim you have expertise in something if you're board-certified? Isn't that how that works? Yeah, so we're saying litigation expertise. Is that implicit that the candidate would have to be board-certified in one of those 10 or so areas that we're listing off? Or, excuse me, two or more. Should be all 10, but I'll settle for two for purposes of this conversation. I don't want to exclude anybody who's reading too deeply into that when it says, because remember, this is coming from Virginia. So I don't know what their laws are. So, well, first of all, I want clarification. Am I remembering that correctly? You cannot say you have expertise in something unless you're board-certified? Is that still the way it works with the bar?
Yes.
Okay.
In Florida, you have to say that you have a specialty or that you're, and that you have expertise. It would be that you have a certification, you're board-certified in that area. So perhaps a better way to describe it there would be litigation experience?
Yeah, I think that's how it has to be.
Mrs. Bowman, do you want to amend your?
Yeah, good catch, Mr. Severo.
So litigation experience.
I try. I really do. I try hard.
I appreciate that. So how would you like that to?
I think
What did you guys just say? Sorry.
I think the counsel's recommendation was experience. I don't want to speak for Ms. Batista.
Litigation experience instead of expertise.
Demonstrated, or should we have it be a little stronger? Not, I don't know, demonstrated, but
I think you can judge that on the rest
Okay, experience. That's fine. I think that sounds great. Thank you.
Mrs. Leonardi, you okay with the amendment?
Is there any objection to that?
Mrs., I don't think so. Mrs. Rupert?
We have to ask.
I wanted to make sure that we're still including the third bullet for experience with education in our school law.
We'll get to that. She's just adding this as a minimum qualification. We haven't gotten to the third bullet.
The third bullet yet. Okay.
Yes.
Seems like it would.
So experience, because you had asked not to move it, so.
Yeah, we just take the word "expert"
I mean, I'm okay with it as far as if it's in this motion, if this accompanies the experience in education or school law is in this motion. Yes. Ms. Batista?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, then we can remove it.
And we're just crossing out "expert."
Right, they're asking about two different things. So Ms. Rupert was bringing back up the third bullet. She wants to make sure experience with education in our school law is not removed. And it's, you're just expanding that third bullet to include all of the other things. So it's not being removed. It's being expanded. It's incorporated in the motion that she's making.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Can you repeat the motion, Madam Chair?
Yes, one more time. So the motion is to expand the third bullet. Instead of it just saying "experience with education or school law," and/or "school law," it would say 10 years of experience in public or private practice with litigation experience in two or more of the following areas, the Constitution, student rights, education, employment, civil rights, real estate, local government, procurement, contract, tort, or construction law.
All right, Chair. Now it's, I think we've created a little bit of a problem. You don't necessarily have to have 10 years of litigation experience. You need to have experience, period, legal experience. Sometimes that ends up in litigation. Sometimes that's just reviewing a contract. Sometimes it's understanding the First Amendment and explaining it to school board members. Why are we starting with litigation experience in any two of these fields?
We're not. It just says "with litigation experience."
Nope. I just heard what the chair read.
It says 10 years of experience in public or private practice with litigation experience. It doesn't say you have to have 10 years of litigation experience. It just says within those 10 years of experience, you should have some litigation experience.
Okay, well, I passed my AP English test in high school. And I think that's a dangling metaphor. If you, what you say is 10 years of experience in public or private practice with litigation experience in one or in two or more of these areas, it could be read that you have litigation experience in two of those areas. And so we just have to be really clear with hard grammar so that people exactly understand what we're looking for.
Litigation experience in those areas.
Right, but are we really counting 10 years of litigation in these fields of law?
That's not what it says. It just says
Let me read it again. 10 years of experience in public or private practice with litigation experience in two or more of the following areas. So we're asking for
It just says within your 10 years of experience in public or private practice, you have to have some litigation. So if you want to put "some" with "some litigation," to be clear, we could add the word "some." But the, I'm not reading it the way you, no, I don't.
Okay. I dropped my grammarian hat.
Mr. Lozano, do you have any insight? Do you think it needs to be wordsmithed?
So I see it the way General Counsel Batista sees it. That is within. So I think we're okay with that language.
You think we're okay, Ms. Batista? Rip it. There we go.
Thank you. Okay. Are we good? Mrs. Rupert?
Okay. I just want to really make sure here that we're deciding if there's two years' experience in education law. That's because it's not just a bullet. It can be in either or. Where it used to be a bullet. It used to be number three, which is how I really like it. But when, and I understand that it's in this list of two or more successful blah-blah-blas, and it's in there. But I think, explain to me. But I think, explain to me, does one have to be education law? It doesn't look like that.
Right, the point was to make a bigger net, but I'm gonna make a motion later to add it to preferred. That it's experience, I mean, education.
I personally.
Okay, so you can vote no on the motion.
Yeah, I'll plan on that.
I'd like to call a question.
All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries, I think there was only two nos, two nos.
The two nos were Dr. Zeeman and, just for the minutes.
Mrs. Leonardi.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Want to do a roll call?
Roll call, school board members. Alhada.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Severo. Hickson.
Yes.
Holness.
No.
Leonardi.
Yes.
Rupert. Thompson.
Yes.
Zeeman. Yes. Seven, two passes.
Okay, all righty, so we're done with that motion. I had Dr. Zeeman.
Thanks so much, Chair. There's a point in our job description, fifth bullet, where we talk about the general counsel serving as our parliamentarian. I was on the board when we added this, I was on the board when we asked Ms. Batista, as our general counsel, to go through some training. Ms. Batista, did you actually get certified as a parliamentarian, or did you just do a minimum amount of training to be fully qualified to do that job?
I am a member of parliamentarian, so I'm not a registered parliamentarian yet.
Terrific, but you completed a, I think, just to remember, remind new people and others, we asked you to take a certain amount of parliamentarian training so that you could help us on, on those issues.
Correct, and I took a test and.
Congratulations, I'm sure you did very well.
Yes.
As always.
Ninety-seven.
Do you want to share your results? You obviously do. Wow. Thank you for, for educating the public on your, your outstanding test results. I'd like, Chair, to find out, though, about, in the research that our staff did on, on this job description, did we find other school districts in this research that were done that asks our general counsel to both be making very subtle judgments about arcane pieces of law and advising the school board and the superintendent on parliamentary procedure? Did any other district have this in there?
Dr. Hepburn.
Dr. Lozano.
We would have to do a follow-up on that information.
Yeah, I, I'll just tell you, I find it a challenge. I think that this board has gotten a lot better at parliamentarian, but it's very difficult to be both of those things to a board. And the parliamentarian generally doesn't carry the same level of authority as your general counsel does. The general counsel is gonna tell you how to stay out of jail, how to not get sued, you know, pretty weighty issues. Making motions and substitute motions and amendments and things like that, while incredibly, you know, good for boards to pay attention to, my preference would be to drop that. If we choose not to drop it, Chair, then I would add something in the minimum qualifications, or I'd ask our staff, if this makes sense. We asked our general counsel to be the parliamentarian in the past and said you had to be a member of the parliamentarian society, loosely described, Ms. Batista. But it seems like we should either have that in preferred qualifications, and then when we hire somebody, if they don't have it, we can ask them to get it in a year or so, and then, and leave it in. Or my preference would be to take out the fifth bullet and allocate that responsibility to somebody else, rather than to our general counsel.
Mrs. Rupert?
Miami-Dade does.
Does?
For the parliamentary procedures, it's knowledge of parliamentary procedures, certification preferred. You asked if somebody had it.
Oh brilliant, thank you so much. And so they double hat, their general counsel is the parliamentarian as well. So let me just start with that, then, if you don't mind. Ms. Rupert, can you, my motion is to read what Miami-Dade says, if you could read that to us.
Sure. Knowledge of parliamentary procedures, parentheses, certification preferred.
And that is under minimum or, or, a minimum or preferred in Miami-Dade?
Well, it says certification preferred, so I'm.
I'm sorry, I think the indication is the knowledge of parliamentary procedures is part of minimum, and then certified in it is preferred.
Yeah, this isn't, it's not split up as nicely as you would like it.
They, they're not following the standard. I would like to make that motion, though, that on the minimum that we say that they have is, is the, I'm sorry, I don't have this Miami-Dade one up, I can find it, and that'll save us some time.
Um, yeah, second from the last one.
Thank you so much. So I would rec, I'd make a motion that we add knowledge, oops, knowledge of parliamentary procedures under minimum and certification as, Ms. Batista, is it as a parliamentarian? Thank you, and then under a preferred certification as parliamentarian.
Zacha.
That's a, that's the motion, to add two bullets.
Zacha.
Thanks.
Okay, any discussion, any public comment on the motion for discussion, Mrs. Leonardi?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, again, this is not the direction that I think we should go in, in terms of narrowing these things. I think how Ms. Batista did it, kind of learning on the job, going through the process, was fine. I think it is important that it is a part of the essential performance responsibilities, but I don't agree with adding this to the qualifications. Thank you.
Okay, I also agree you were trying to whittle it down. I believe that we put the, the requirement in Ms. Batista's evaluation. That was part of the objectives, to participate in the parliamentary part of it. So although it's part of what we would accept, expect for their performance, I don't want to put it in the minimum. I don't mind putting it in preferred, but I wouldn't want to put it in minimum. Mrs. Alhada.
So I would just, when, I was just thinking the added part to this is when someone becomes chair, maybe that we require them to do some type of training, whether it's, you know, with Robert's Rules of Order or a parliamentarian training, because it's, it's, I think there's two parts to this, and even the vice chair, too. So this way, they're also learning. So I know that's not part of this today, but I think that should be brought up later with the chairs and the vice chairs' responsibility, and then the training that they get. And I think, because that, it's not just all on general counsel, it's the chair and the vice chair, too.
Anybody else, Dr. Holness?
Dr. Zeeman, I would be supportive of the motion if it is placed on the preferred. I am concerned about that particular aspect under minimum. So if you want to modify, then I'll be supportive, if not, then I, I, I think we're gonna narrow too much.
Mrs. Batista.
I'm not going to opine whether it should be in which section or what, but I just wanted to add that because we are considered, the board is considered a small group or a small body, social psycho media and whatnot, Robert's Rule says that Robert, that the parliamentary procedures are generally applied more loosely than in large assemblies. So I just wanted to, you know, that's one of the reasons that I believe that it wasn't as part, part of the job description in the beginning, is because they had, you know, the general counsel always had some knowledge of parliamentary procedure, but, you know, it wasn't as, I'm gonna say regimented, as the board has desired that the application of those rules be made as of late.
Terrific.
So Madam Chair, I think my, my understanding of the motion is, is that the person has some knowledge or experience, but not necessarily in terms of the applicability of Robert's Rules, you know, rigidly to the board. So if the maker of the motion want to clarify what his intent is.
Dr. Zeeman.
Yeah, if there's no objection, I'd just want to do the experience part as a preferred, not minimum, so that the motion amended, if there's no objection, would be that in the preferred knowledge of parliamentary procedures. And let me just explain why I think, well, I'll stop there, then I'd like to talk about it, if there's no objection.
I think Mrs. Rupert seconded the motion.
Ms. Simon, thank you.
Great. We do do parliamentary procedure loosely here, I guess, general counsel. My point in doing this is that there are lawyers who spend their life in their office. And they're brilliant lawyers, and they read contracts, and they settle issues, and they write brilliant opinions about First Amendment and torts and things like that. And they never have left their office to actually work in a committee setting. They're not, you know, familiar with it. And I think that it would make sense, if we're gonna make it a job condition, that we at least have it in the preferred list, that you have some experience with that. There are still, to Mr. Severo's point, there's still plenty of room for people to apply that haven't done that, but it would be a flag, and we'd probably have to do something as part of the hiring process to make sure that they were deepening. And I love Ms. Alhada's point about chairs and vice chairs. They, they have more to do with the conduct of this meeting than the lawyer does. And so I know we'll have our meeting next month, and maybe we can remind, remind each other to talk about that and see if that's the will of the board. Thank you very much, Chair. So that's the amended motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up is Dr. Hol-, oh, were you done, Dr. Zeeman?
I am, yes, thank you.
Dr. Holness.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, based upon what we currently have in the job description, I just want to make sure I understand it clearly, and maybe Ms. Batista can help. Is it possible we could have, based upon what we've, we've agreed upon so far, hire a candidate who could possibly not have ESC, FERPA, or contract review experience?
Ms. Batista.
Based on the motions we, we pass in this session, including the motion by Board Member Bowman with more, one or, I mean, two or more of the following, is, is there a possibility that we could hire someone without ESC, FERPA, or contract review experience that would fit in the guideline requirements we have so far? And here's the reason I'm asking this question.
Madam Chair. Ms. Batista.
So I'm going to answer it this way. I think there is a, a strong possibility that a candidate will qualify for the position without that type of experience. However, whether you hire somebody without that experience is up to you.
Got it. So, so based upon what we have so far, someone could qualify without this type of experience. All right, so that is concerning to me. Broad County Schools, we have fifty, well, Dr. Hepburn? In Broad County Schools, how many ESC students do we have?
Dr. Hepburn.
Go ahead, Dr. Fulton, I want to, Ms. Col- no, it's.
About forty thousand.
Forty thousand, yeah.
So we have about forty thousand ESC students, and, and I've been actually visiting ESC schools recently. So I would like that in, in the preferred part of the, the job description, that this is included as priority, as part of the preferred experience. Now, it will not change the pool of applicants, because it's in, it's in preferred. As a board, we'll decide if, if we have a candidate with these preferred experiences, if that would be relevant to hiring such an individual. So I'd like to make a motion, just to ensure that we have someone that we would rather have ESC experience, contract review, and FERPA be in, be preferred, or in the preferred section. I'd like to make a motion that we include ESC, FERPA, and contract review as a preferred requirement.
There a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay. Any public comment on the motion? Board member discussion on the motion? Mrs. Leonardi?
Do we have staff that specifically work on those issues in our legal department?
Ms. Batista.
Yes, we currently have three attorneys that do contract review, one attorney that specializes in ESC and, and FERPA issues.
Okay. I, I think that if we go down this road, we could add like a million preferred things. And I, again, I don't know that that's a wise exercise.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. No, motion fails. Any other board, I, I have one thing. So I would also like to make a motion. So I move that we add experience with education and/or school law in the preferred qualifications and experience. Okay, any public comment on the motion? Board discussion, Dr. Zeeman.
I'm just curious how this is gonna read to an applicant, because in the minimum, we say that as well. We say you have to have experience in education law.
It doesn't, it, it could be one of the two. It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I, let me just say it another way. I think it's implicit in the job. Like, if you're gonna apply to be a general counsel of a school board, especially the one, a large urban one like ours, it's, it's just implicit in the title. And I, I think we're very clear that we would like a broad net to capture lots of candidates, and I think we will with the experience that we've listed in the minimum. So I just don't think that this is necessary, that's all.
Okay, well, thank you. Mrs. Leonardi.
I'm curious to hear from our HR staff what the role or impact of the preferred qualifications has in sorting through the applicants and ranking them.
Dr. Lozano.
The preferred requirements, when we're doing a screening process, kind of gives people additional points in that area. So you have your minimum qual, you go through your responsibilities, and then the preferred, if those people had that, that would give them additional scoring points, opportunities to score higher than others.
Okay, ultimately, though, it's up to the board to, it, it doesn't, it doesn't weed people out, correct?
Correct, it would not disqualify somebody from the position.
Okay, so if someone, in theory, didn't meet any of the preferred qualifications, we could still theoretically select them as our general counsel?
That is correct, as long as they met the minimum qualifications, then that person could be considered.
Okay. How does that, how does it impact how the candidates are presented to the board? So are you gonna, I mean, I, I know we're not talking about process, but I'm just wondering how that, how these candidates then will be presented to the board?
Right, we're gonna discuss that when we talk about the role of the Legal Services Committee, and that'll, I'm assuming, will be part of their role.
Okay.
Mrs. Alhada.
Thank you. I think why we're all sensitive to this, because in the past, in the past, it was, we were actually asking them to be certified, educational law certified. And so we've come down from that. So I still think, I like it adding as an additional bullet point, even though it's in minimum. I think it just adds that extra oomph. I understand that it's obvious, but words matter, and this was really important to us in the past, to be certified, and we would love for someone to come in to be educational certified. So I like it here in the bullet points.
Mr. Severo.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just want some, some clarification from Dr. Lozano and his team on the, on the minimum versus preferred. If, if in fact this experience with education and school law is removed from the minimum qualifications category and put into the preferred qualifications category, and, actually, strike that, if it's, if it's left as it is now, and a, an applicant applies, and they don't have experience in education or school law, and if it's in the minimum qualifications, is that, within your internal procedures, is that automatically disqualified, meaning that you don't even, we won't even see it?
That is correct.
Okay, so if it's removed and put into the preferred qualifications, presumably, it will, if someone doesn't have it, it's a, it's a, it's an extra check if they do, but it's not, it won't, it won't be, it won't disqualify, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so here's my problem with not having the education and, and, and school law in the minimum qualifications.
Before, we actually took it out already, that was the motion that passed. It's incorporated in the motion that Mrs. Bowman, Mrs. Bowman made, so it's not spelled out any longer as experience with education and/or school law. It is the ten years' experience in public or private practice, blah blah blah. So that's why I'm asking to move it to preferred, so that we keep it somewhere in the job script. So I just want you to know, it's not there now.
My apologies, I must have, I must have misunderstood the inform- My apologies, I must have, I must have misunderstood the motion before to that full extent. So as, as we sit right now, we have removed education and school law from the minimum qualifications, meaning if we get an applicant who does not have that qualification, he'll still go through the vetting process and the scoring process, and we'll still see the application.
As long as they have two or more.
Within the category of Ms. Bowman's.
Correct.
Prior motion. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mrs. Bowman.
I just, I wanted to clarify against you, because I, in the interest of not being redundant, so it's in, it's in the minimum qualifications, and Ms. Batista, sorry, guys, can you explain again what educational law is? Because it's, it encompasses a lot of different areas. So when we're saying educational law, to add it again when we have it up here, I'd, yeah, education is like real estate, there's a.
Right. Educational law would encompass all the different areas of law that are part of practicing within the education field.
And running the school district, so it's a variety. So there's, the education's a catch-all, broad field that incorporates a lot of different areas of law, which we already have on here.
Right, broader than school law.
Right, okay.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no.
No.
Roll call.
Madam Chair, can you repeat the motion, please?
The motion was to add experience with education and/or school law into preferred qualifications and experience.
Yes. In the previous motion, are any of those categories not encompassing educational law, like constitution, real estate? Because if someone comes in with two, comes in with two of those areas of experience, then, my question is, then it wouldn't necessarily be educational law. So that's why it's important for it to be in preferred. But is it, any of those two categories not educational law?
Ms. Batista.
Yes.
I'm not sure that I understand the question exactly, but I think what you're asking is, is it possible for a candidate to qualify and not have, I guess, education, some education or school law experience?
Correct.
Right. And I think that would be possible.
Right.
Because you could have done procurement and contract law for a private entity and never have done it related to an educational entity.
Right. So that's why it's, this is a good motion, because you add it to preferred, and then at least it would be there, and you're not limiting your scope of candidates.
Okay, we'll try that again. Roll call.
Roll call on the motion. School Board Members Bowman.
No.
Sevres. Hickson.
Yes.
Holness.
Yes.
Leonardi.
No.
Rupert. Thompson.
Yes.
Zeman.
No.
Aladev.
Yes.
It passes six-three.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, Mrs. Bowman.
Just for clarification, so Ms. Aladev's motion originally that we passed, what did that replace in minimum qualification? Because there seems nothing.
The second, it replaced the second bullet, where it said a minimum of ten years of progressively more.
It probably should also.
No, because they were two different things. One is about managerial experience, and the other one is about what you're.
Well, no, 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 I'm not talking about my, that passed motion. Bullet number two.
Under minimum qualification.
Bullet number four seemed to address. I don't know if that's, if that would, if her motion would replace both of those or just one? Because it's, it's a minimum of progressively responsible managerial experience in law firms, corporate offices. This is experience supervising a team of attorneys, so that's the same.
Do you have a motion?
Well, because you're managing.
You have to make a motion if you want.
Okay.
If not, we're going to, we're going to vote on the job description, so we can move on.
Well, no, I'd think that it's a little redundant if we have the, if we have, if we keep both of them in there. I guess I would move to, that Ms. Aladev's motion, the language that she put in there would replace the second and the fourth bullet.
In minimum qualifications. Just, well, to clarify here, it says a minimum of seven years of progressively responsible managerial experience in law firms, so that's just responsible.
Managerial.
Right, managerial. The second one, the fourth bullet says supervising a team of attorneys addressing legal issues across multiple subject areas. That's different than.
Well, managerial, I would say, is the same. I mean, you're.
Right, but one is about across multiple subject areas, one's just that you're a manager. And it was enough, I mean, there were two separate bullets originally. Because all Mrs. Aladev's motion did was reduce the number of years of the managerial part.
Well, this isn't managerial. Number two says that you have more responsible work experience, that you're not managing anything in that one.
Hmm, that's true.
So the managerial is number four, supervising managerial. I mean, I think we could clean that up a little bit.
So do you have a motion?
I would keep, I would keep number two the way it is, and put Ms. Aladev's.
We are, our motion was to change number two to what Mrs. Aladev did, so number two doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, well, then.
Just so you know. So your motion can be to delete or strike number four if you want, but you can't address.
I can't add the language back in?
I mean, I guess you could.
I would, I would, I would move to strike number four, because I think that's what Ms. Aladev's motion is doing, and then to add number two, because that addresses the ten years, you have to have ten years of experience, we already agreed with that, or we don't, you know.
But the motion that you just made said you had to have ten years of experience, so your motion actually took care of that as well.
Okay, well, then I, we have that stricken. I think that number four is redundant.
Okay, is there a second?
So I would strike it.
Madam Chair, can I clarify the motion? I just want to understand if the motion is to, is to.
Strike bullet number four.
And bring back bullet number two?
Just strike.
Just strike bullet number four?
Don't bring back number two. We're not reviving.
Okay, second.
Oh, so number four says experience supervising a team of attorneys addressing legal issues across multiple subject areas. Any public comment? Board Member comment? Mrs. Aladev?
So I would not be for that motion, because it's two different things. We need to keep the, that experience supervising a team, because the supervising is the day-to-day oversight and operations of the legal department, whereas the managing is more on strategic planning and coordination.
Thank you. Any other board member comment? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Did you change your mind? You made the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Madam Chair, I'm aye.
Okay, so the motion fails. Two to seven.
It needs to be written better, I just, I can't.
Tell me about it.
It's not.
All right, any other, any other discussion on job description, or can we vote on the amended job description? Since we're an hour and a half in, people were afraid three hours is too long.
We were hoping it was too long.
All those in favor of item number one, the job description for general counsel as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. So the next thing that we're going to talk about is whether we're going to do an external or internal search. So, Dr. Hepburn, you want to turn it back over?
You can proceed, Dr. Lozano.
Thank you.
Our next item is to determine whether or not you want to go with an outside external recruiting firm, headhunter, or do we want to use our internal departments here? And my research, we've called a couple of headhunters, recruiting firms, about eight to ten of them, and we had a couple questions last time about coming to you with a contingency, which firms would be interested in contingency plan versus their cost and such, so I can review that research with you, if you would prefer, Madam Chair.
Yeah, if you could just briefly, I know you sent us a document with it on it, so maybe just refer to where it is in the document.
I can. So you have three different timelines in your packet there. You have one titled, on the left-hand side, you'll see internal timeline, an external timeline, and then the interim. Under the external timeline, you will see about what the industry standard is, and the cost run from about twenty percent to thirty-five percent of a first-year salary. If we go with an external firm that does offer a, does a percentage, we may have to go through the procurement process, because at this time, we don't know what the salary will be, so it's difficult to, for me, to guarantee that we'll be coming in under fifty thousand, so we could go into an agreement with a recruitment firm that would be, base their costing structure on a percentage. We did find one, two companies that will do a flat rate, under fifty thousand. So I feel our, excuse me, I feel our external search firms are very limited on what will give us choices in order to meet a timeline of trying to replace somebody by the time Ms. Batista leaves, especially if we've got to go out through the recruitment process. So that is our external, kind of my thoughts on your external. And then the eternal, do you want me to pause?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And then with the eternal, if we lose our in-house talent management, talent acquisition departments, our only cost there would be if we wanted to cast the net and do some paid marketing, advertising, that would be our cost associated with that, which would run as approximately five to maybe eight thousand dollars. However, we have already started to reach out to candidates. It's a very specialized pool, whereas typically, when you use a recruiting or a headhunter, you do definitely use one of those for a specialized or an executive-type position. However, with this being so contained within, you have to have the Florida bar, with it being in education, we do have a networking out there of candidates that we can already reach out to, to kind of help build our pool. So I do feel if we did the internal search, with the timeline you see outlined here, we would be able to get somebody in place, depending on your availability, of course, with additional meetings, in place before the winter, or right before the end of December, first week in December, before Ms. Batista's departure.
Thank you. Dr. Zeman.
Thanks so much, Chair. I'm just dying to know, I appreciate, a lot of work went into helping us understand options that we have on the, on the process. We happen to have somebody that's been a general counsel in a large urban district, though, and I'd be curious, Chair, if you're aware of Ms. Batista's general guidance to us about the value of internal versus external, and kind of what we should know based on her thirty-two years of experience doing education law, about finding another one. There are some preconceived notions that all of us probably brought to this meeting, but there's one person here that's actually lived in this field, and I'd be curious, Chair, if she could educate us a little bit on, on how she feels the process is going to unfold here in the next few months.
Ms. Batista.
Well, what I would expect is that HR has already done an excellent job of putting together a timeline and a process that they, they feel confident will yield applicants, qualified applicants, to, you know, to be able to have, you know, the ad out and reach out through HR to these particular candidates that they have already located in the area of education law. I don't know if, you know, what, what other, I mean, we had a conversation last week, so we had some ideas that we already talked, I already spoke about to HR, about potential places they could look, not just, you know, in, within necessarily the normal places, which would be school districts, right? And so the process would be, you know, to have, release an ad for, I would say, three weeks or somewhere around that, that timeframe, and, you know, look at the pool of applicants and go through that process of qualifying the applicants, you know, looking to see if they're qualified, and then interviewing.
Terrific. And would you feel, and again, this is asking someone who's lived in this field for decades, would you feel like there is, I mean, there's a trade-off here between speed and using an external process, it seems like, according to our team? And I know how much you hate to give us your opinion about things, but in this case, you are the subject matter expert in the room. Do you, how do you get a sense of that trade-off of speed versus cost versus external in terms of, are we going to get a lot of juice for the squeeze on hiring somebody or putting out an incentive contract for lots of people to work on to try and find your relief?
I mean, so if you really want the personal experience, I have been approached by recruiting firms in the past, right, to, to apply to other districts and, you know, and you always feel special when someone approaches you specifically, right? And I think that can be done through the internal HR department. They can reach out just as well and make that phone call to, you know, specific candidates that they feel are uniquely qualified. If they are, you know, they're able to do that, then I don't see that there would be much of a difference between an outside firm and the HR department actually conducting it.
Terrific. And to the general counsel again, is there a meeting coming up in the next month of the, of Florida Association of Attorneys, and will you be attending that meeting?
Yes.
And during that meeting, will you actively approach anybody that you think is qualified and make them aware of the opportunity that they have in Broad?
Of course.
And have you been able to talk to people on your staff here to encourage them to look at this and consider it as well?
Yes.
Terrific.
Absolutely.
I don't know who's chair anymore, but whoever's chair, thank you very much, I'm done.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonardi.
The chair is the chair. Ms. Hickson.
It's a title, not a person.
In reaching out to search firms, can you tell me about, like, the profile of the firms that, that we reached out to? Like, are they, are they solely legal recruiting firms, or do they do recruiting across the board with a legal, like, specialty department?
Dr. Hepburn.
Dr. Lozano.
Hi, Ms. Leonardi. Yes, they were a variety of different firms that do specialize in legal, they specialize in education, they specialize in government resources, some private firms we talked to, so we had a variety of them that specialize in different, certainly do hone in on legal, but we also expanded our reach to talk to others as well.
Okay. And did we, like, did we contact these, these firms directly? Like, did we speak to human beings, or did we, like, reach out through an online query?
We called them individually, and we had a series of questions that we asked them.
Okay. Okay. I, in conversations that I've had, just with people in the community, it's my understanding that this is a two-to-four-month process, whether we do internal or external. So I don't know if we're ready to have a conversation, if, if we're simply talking right now, are, do we want to do internal versus external? Is that the conversation we're having?
Yes.
Okay. I am open right now to starting off with an internal search. I've got to say, though, I'm not super enthusiastic about doing, like, paid online advertisements. I think I said this in the last meeting. I, I think I said this in the last meeting. I think, like, word of mouth and people reaching out to people, speaking directly to them, is much more powerful than someone seeing an ad on anything. So I, I have some concerns about, about doing this internally. I have concerns about doing it externally because I think those of us who were around when we hired external firms in the superintendent searches, we, we weren't thrilled with how that went. So I, you know, I'm interested in hearing the thoughts of my colleagues, but I, I do think, you know, last meeting, I was much more concerned about getting this done in a quick manner. I'm less concerned about that. I think we need to make a plan today for, like, a two-to-more, two-to-four-month timeline. I think we need to make a plan to have an interim. I, I agree with the idea that we need to do this right, not necessarily fast.
Okay. I'm gonna just make a motion and then I'll go to you. So I would like to make a motion that we start with an internal search and have a report back by November 12th meeting to see how many applicants there are, and then at that time, if we're not satisfied, then we can go out for an external search.
Second.
Any public comment on the motion? Board member, comment on the motion. Mrs. Alhada.
Thank you. I support the motion. I think we need to try to, A, save money, and, and B, use our resources. One of the things I would ask is, there is 47 people with, that have the educational law certified lawyers. I can send you the link. They give their name, they give their address, they give their office cellphone number and their personal cellphone number. I think we should be very strategic on reaching out to all 46 people because Ms. Batista's on that list.
Change your mind.
To give them that, that personalization and ask and, and walk them through it, but be very specific about it. I would like to see the, the list, specifically who you reached out to, how many times, and, and keep reaching out to those people, not just, oh, one, and I got an answering machine, and I don't call them back again.
Thank you. Mrs. Leonardi?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, again, I don't want us to limit ourselves just to those individuals, and I think, you know, the general counsel of a very small district in the state may not, they may be a good fit, they may not be. So I, I really hope that we don't just stick to those individuals, but that we're reaching out to other govern, you know, agents, attorneys at other government agencies that, you know, obviously fill the job description, because I could see a scenario in which the general counsel of a, a large urban city in Florida would be able to do this job well, and they may not be. I think, you know, I just really don't want us to limit ourselves, and I really can't emphasize enough Ms. Alhada's point that we are reaching out with a phone call, speaking to people in real life. Thank you.
Mrs. Bowman?
I agree with the personal touch. So I, you know, I think we, we don't want to limit, and so I appreciate the fact that there's X number of people that are board-certified in education law. There are, I'm sure, a vast additional number of people that would qualify for this in another capacity. So, and I, and I think that's something that we really have to take into consideration, too, is when you're, I actually was talking to some people about this, but, you know, like, the affordability issue of living in Broward, are you really getting someone from a much more affordable part of the state to come down here to leave their position? I mean, there's a lot of considerations that, and we have a very, you know, specific kind of situation in Broward. So, that, I mean, obviously, reaching out to the people that are board-certified, that's the low-hanging fruit, that's obvious. That doesn't really take a rocket science to get to that point, but I think that if we're going to do an internal search, which I don't disagree with, to start, that we need to be looking at a broader candidate pool. The most obvious to me would be other government attorneys that have the ability, you know, are familiar with, with working within a government setting and having, you know, having a board that they're accountable to and kind of working in this kind of area. So I would hope that, I, I think, I don't know if we need to add that, or I don't know, but I just.
Well, we're going to talk about the application process next.
Okay, but that, but I think if we're going to do internal, then we still need to be working to get as broad a pool as we can, which would include, that, I mean, that's government, but also private, because there's people that may want to, you know, they might be at the end of their career, they've done litigation, they've done billable hours, they have had leadership positions, and they want to come, and they would want to try something like this. So I don't know how you're going to identify those people, but they may be there.
Dr. Lozano, can you give a, what would an internal search look like?
So I'm very confident in my team that they could do a thorough internal search and bring you some candidates you'll be happy with. As we're going broader, I do feel that's where that $5,000 to $8,000 request to market and assist my team. We can easily do the personalized calls with the list, but if we're going to broaden the scope, that $5,000 to $8,000 request will greatly assist my team in getting more applicants in a broader pool.
So I have a question. Does my motion need to include how much money, then? Ms. Batista? Because that was part of the presentation for internal included that, so if we vote for internal, does that include?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I'm confused about that, general counsel. We, we just went through a whole bunch of FSB training that told us to say to the staff what to do and not how to do it. And if the superintendent and Dr. Lozano think they need to go spend some money to get the word out because they're not getting enough applicants, I don't think the board should be in that business. We should say, go find us great candidates. If, if you and the superintendent, within your budget, need to go spend some budgeted money to, to do this, you have a recruiting budget. I don't want to get into the micromanaging of saying whether they do or don't do it.
That's what Ms. Batista just said, that I didn't need.
She did?
Yes.
That was brilliant. Yes, maybe louder next time.
Mrs. Bowman?
Um, this is a very important job, I mean, one of the top, so I, you know, I think we have to do what we have to do to get the right candidates, too, either internal or external. So, I mean, you know, it's like, if you save money with the search and we end up either wasting a lot of time without a good candidate, or we get a subpar candidate and we end up wasting money on that end, I, I think, like, let's put our resources into finding the best candidate and not limit that.
Anybody else? All those in favor of the motion, and the motion was to go with an internal search with a report back on November 12th as to how many applicants there are, so we can determine whether we want to change that motion or not.
I, oh, sorry, I had some, another question. To what extent does the legal services committee play a role in that?
That's next.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so the next part of the discussion is the application process. So, does staff want to talk about that?
So the next step in the process would be to determine the application process, so we wanted to hear your feedback on what you would like that to look like, as well as the role of the legal services committee. So we have our general application that we do, but oftentimes, we can include some specific questions, and you can also even decide if you would like to, well, more so for the legal services committee, since they'll be the first ones to see them. Would you like to see responses written? Would you like us to get virtual responses? So I wanted to get some feedback from you on what you kind of are envisioning that process to look like, and if there would be some specific questions that you wanted us to obtain some answers on, so as you're reviewing and screening the candidates, you have a better idea of what the person looks like and can bring to the table for you.
I, I have a question. Do we have an application from the, do you have an application already that, like, a template that you're using? Because I think we kind of would need to see what that looks like to be able to give comments.
We have our standard application that anybody who applies to a position with the school district completes, but we can add questions to enhance that application for specifics, information regarding that position. So.
So what does that standard application include generally?
Generally, name, address, where you went to school, your, your perform, your jobs that you've held, how long have you held them, a brief statement about your responsibilities in those positions. Then there's some HR thing, some disclosure questions that we ask along those lines. Help me out, Ms. Tyter, if I'm missing other things. But it's usually a, an application to gather an, an overview of the person, and then depending on the positions that we're advertising for, we will ask some specific questions to that position and ask them to, for answers to those questions. Other times, we've asked people to provide a video in answering those questions. We've included that, a presentation on something would be required as part of the application process. So it's more job-dependent on what we want to seek, and to help guide you during that screening process where you can narrow it down to some finalists that you really want to bring forward.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as far as the internal process, week three and week four, in terms of the application process, I would like talent acquisition to, to play a sort of a greater role in the candidates that would end up going to legal services council, in terms of not just the filtering the minimum qualification, but also taking a look at the preferred qualification, providing some sort of a scoring or ranking system to those who meet more of the preferred qualifications. And then that is then presented to legal services council for further review and then taken to the board. I guess the way I understand it here, and maybe I'm wrong, is that talent acquisition will verify the minimum qualifications, and then all of those who meet the minimum qualification will then go to legal services council. I would prefer that talent acquisition not only verify the minimum qualification, but provide some sort of a ranking or scoring on those who meet the preferred qualification before it goes to legal services council, and then legal services council take that, those candidates, and, and filter that out to determine who comes to the board.
Dr. Lozano?
So we, we definitely, through the review of the application process, look at both the minimum and preferred, and we could provide a rubric for the committee or the entire board of which minimum and which preferred qualifications each candidate meets, and we can also do a pre-scoring as well and provide it to the legal services committee scored by the talent acquisition team.
Got it. So I, Madam Chair, I would prefer, because of their, it's within their line of work, that talent acquisition basically does the scoring or, or the ranking based upon what you feel, how you feel those candidates meet the minimum qualification before it goes to legal services council. I don't want that role to be the, the role played by legal services council when, Dr. Lozano, you, your department has the experience to be able to look at those applications and provide a scoring, and then subsequently, that would go to legal services council to take it from there, as opposed to legal services council taking all of the minimum qualifications and determining a scoring. I, I would rather see it done prior before it goes to legal services council.
Anybody have any objection to what Dr. Holness is asking? Mrs. Bowman?
And I apologize if this was already spoken, said. So if, are you, this is before we actually interview somebody?
Correct.
Okay, so you're.
So what we would do, and I think the legal services committee would appreciate, if HR provides them all the qualified candidates and the screening complete to what Dr. Holness is recommending, we'll also, you know, give the entire list so the committee can see all of the resumes, but it will, I think, greatly assist them in time management if we provide them a completed packet with a screening rubric already completed.
Yeah.
Okay, so Madam Chair, in terms of that process, is it just a suggestion that we make, or is it a motion? Or what, what are we doing?
Ms. Batista, you can make a motion.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that talent acquisition not only screen for minimum qualifications, but also for preferred qualifications and provide legal services council with a, and Dr. Lozano, you can, you can correct me on the term, Dr. Lozano, and talent acquisition provide legal services council with a ranking or?
Correct. And then what the legal services committee would do is look at those rankings and say, based on this, there's a clear line of delineation we want to recommend to the entire board for finalists, right, everybody who scored 100 and above. Let's bring five, let's bring three, based on the total number of qualified candidates, so.
Right. So Madam Chair, it's not taking, it's not taking any, any sort of, it's still giving the legal services committee latitude to decide who they want. It's just taking a lot of the work off of them and the expertise of doing so, leaving that up to talent acquisition. So, so the motion then is, is for talent acquisition to screen the applicants for minimum qualifications as well as preferred, and provide a ranking for those to legal services committee to be able to make the final decisions as to which candidates come to the board.
Second, the motion. Any public comment on the motion? Board member discussion?
Just wanted to clarify that there is, you know, set of bylaws for the legal services committee, and there are five members to the legal services committee that include the superintendent and myself, in addition to the three board members. So I think to just say the legal services committee is kind of a misnomer. So if you can just make sure that there is at least discussion so that everybody understands that the only people that would be involved would be the three board members that serve in the legal services committee.
Okay, so Madam Chair.
Just your.
Right, my motion is still going to be in place for a, shortly voting on, but I would also like to talk about the composition of the legal services committee based on Ms. Batista's comment before we actually vote on my motion, because I think she's saying that it's important that we determine that before we continue.
I don't think we're determining anything. We, we talked about that last week.
Okay.
So Ms. Batista and the superintendent wouldn't be part of the decision-making, so I think what Ms. Batista's saying is in your motion, maybe it should say the board members who serve on the legal services.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to clarify that as well, because I know that was a suggestion, but I don't recall it was a motion to exclude the superintendent and Ms. Batista. So I'd like to, I don't think we had a motion that, we, we suggested that, but it was not in a motion. So I'd like to question whether or not, I, I'd like to find out why, and I understand the rationale, but what would be the problem if the superintendent and Ms. Batista is on the legal services committee?
Uh, Ms. Batista? I don't remember the, I thought we settled on that. Dr. Hepburn, do you have any thoughts? Or Dr. Lozano?
Go ahead, Dr. Lozano.
So I think it's cleaner if it's just the three board members who serve on the legal services committee to ask the sitting general counsel to participate, could or could not, but I don't think that's going to bring you any different information than the three serving board members and the superintendent as well. The general counsel position works directly for the board, so the board handling the hiring of the general counsel position makes the most sense.
Okay, so I, I was wondering if, what would be the problem with the superintendent? Is there a conflict? I'm trying, I'm, I'm not understanding why the exclusion of the superintendent. I can somewhat understand not including legal counsel, since we're trying to determine a legal counsel candidate, and there could be potential conflict, but what would be the conflict having the superintendent continue on the legal service committee? I'm just not understanding.
So I weigh in on that, on that, Dr. Holness. Dr. Lozano kind of hit it on the nod, is that this position reports directly to the board, as do I, so I'm one of the three direct reports to the board. My, typically, when we hire anybody, it's the hiring manager that's doing the hiring and part of the, the interview process. And so I, I just see a conflict that I'm a. And so I, I just see a conflict that I'm a direct report to the board, as is the general counsel's office and also the chief auditor's office, for me to be in that committee at that time to, to give any input and insight, just to make the process cleaner without in, any influence from my part versus what the board may be directly looking for in the next general counsel.
Understand. Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Hepburn. So my motion is with the understanding that the legal service committee is, consists of the three board members.
Okay, I'm still second the motion. Any discussion? Mrs. Alhade?
So, Dr. Hepburn, just to look at it a different way. I, I see, you know, you and your staff, you work directly every day in, all day long with the general counsel. So we do value your opinion. And so maybe not in this process that you weigh in, but I think it is, your opinion does matter within this process. And maybe that is having individual conversations with board members. But we do want your opinion, for sure.
Mrs. Rupert, did you want to speak on the motion?
Just, just clarification. Would the legal services committee be able to look at all the resumes and not just the ranked ones?
Yes, I think the idea was they would bring them, all of them, just ranked.
Right.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Right, but I, let me clarify. If they didn't meet the qualifications, they wouldn't go to the committee, is that correct? You would only be sending the minimum qualified, minimally qualified candidate?
That would be our plan, but if you want to see the ones that we determined to be not qualified, we could do that too. That's the will of the board.
Okay, Mrs. Alhade?
I was just going to say, you know, within this process, if the board wants to have two more people from the board just to be in this process, not specifically on the legal service committee, this way you have five board member representatives. You know, someone later can make a motion to add two more people to this, just to this process.
Madam Chair?
Hold on one second. Dr. Seaman?
All right. My understanding is that this board, composed of whomever we designate, are simply drawing a, a line across a chart of ranked people and say, we're going to interview three, five, or seven. They're going to, they're going to keep going down the rank and they're going to draw, the cut score is what we often call it, right? And say, above this goes forward, below this, we hold for right now. Is that correct, Chair?
It could be. I mean, I think we're still trying to determine that. I think the idea was that they would give recommendations to the board. But as a board, if we wanted to look at all of them, we still, we're a board of nine. So we would still be able to vote on who should be interviewed. If I'm not mistaken, when we looked for, I think it was a superintendent, my brain is muffled with a lot of things. But there were recommendations that came forward, but the board actually pulled another person and interviewed them as well. So it's a recommendation to us, but as, since we would all be getting the information to go through, you could still, if there was someone not recommended, someone from the board could still bring that forward.
Terrific. So I, I, I'm glad that we understand that. I, I think that three members of the board is enough because the other six of us are going to be able to see the other candidates. And if we see somebody jumping off our, based on their complete package that we think ought to be moved forward, we can do that before, before, right? It's a body of nine. So these three have no statutory authority to make any decisions on behalf of the board. That will have to come to the board. So if what this committee is doing is helping in the process to screen to a lower number and report that out, I, I think three is going to be enough because the rest of us will still be able to review all the applications. And if there's someone below whatever that set of people recommended to go forward is, we can pull some. Conversely, if there's someone on that list and we just think, look at what they've done, or, you know, here's something that we view is not making them fully eligible, we can take somebody off that list. So that is our authority as a board. I hope we take this very seriously. I would value the superintendent's input, as Ms. Alhade said. But I also respect his position, which is pretty clear that he doesn't want to judge candidates because they are an equal report to the school board over time. So I think the three is going to be plenty. I think that they're fully qualified to, you know, in essence, look over the shoulder of our talent acquisition team and go, great, you know, let's do this. I hope that it's a minimum imposition on your team. The three, it's the school board chair and Ms. Bowman, no, Ms. Bowman, Mr. Severa, and, and Ms. Leonardo, okay. So, yeah, I, I, I think we can make this easy, let the three pick them. We'll all review it when it comes to the board and move on.
Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I can go either way. I can understand having five as well because I know that talent acquisition is going to submit all of the minimum qualification candidates with a ranking system. The legal services committee is going to narrow that down and they'll have the autonomy to do it however they want. So I, I know at some point they're going to probably need to reach consensus at times. And I think reaching consensus is better with five than with three. So I, I would be more in line of five because what's going to come to the board is the, is the narrowing down of candidates from whatever number they receive to whatever they submit to us. So they could receive 30 and we get four, based upon their decision. I just think it would be easier with more than three for them to be able to come to a consensus if there's any sort of debate on whether or not to include or not to include a candidate that would come before us. So I would be supportive of five. I don't know if we need a vote on that, or?
Well, let's vote on your original motion and then we'll come back to, to that. Anybody else on the mo, and can you just repeat your motion one more time?
If I can remember. Okay, the motion is for talent acquisition to recruit candidates who meet the minimum qualifications as well as the preferred qualifications and provide a ranking system to the legal service committee, who will then use autonomy in determining which candidates come forward to the board.
All those in favor of the motion say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, does somebody want to make an additional motion?
Board Member Alhadev, do you want to make the motion?
I move to add Dr. Seaman and Dr. Holness to this process. To add to the, just this process with the additional members from the legal service committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment on the motion? Board member discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
You want to do a roll call?
Roll call on the motion. Board Members Severa? Hickson?
No.
Holness?
Yes.
Leonardo?
No.
Rupert? Thompson?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Alhadev? And Bowman?
No.
Motion fails five-four.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a motion. So I would like to move that along with the application that's there, that we ask candidates to provide a writ, a, a virtual or a video that explains why they're applying, what relevant experience they have applicable to Florida education law, and their experience supervising a team. Is there a second? Oh, second, okay. Public comment on the motion? Board member discussion on the motion? Dr. Seaman?
Chair, I'm just curious, where in the process are you suggesting doing this? Just for them to apply or once they're selected to move forward with the next stage of the recruiting process?
Part of the application process to attach a video. I think that's kind of standard in today's world. But so that it gives the committee and us a, a way to capture some of those specific things that we want to know so that we know if we wanted them to move on in the process.
Let me just, I'd be curious if our staff views that as a standard practice at this point? Or is it a standard practice once they're selected for kind of a next round of, of the interview process?
Dr. Lozano?
It, it would be the will of the board. However, we have used that in teacher recruiting. We have a series of questions we ask teachers and they turn them in in a video format for us to review and screen them. Sometimes it even includes a demonstration lesson. So we have done that in the past. So it is just, I believe it's going to be up to the legal services committee, the board. What you want as your legal services committee, what are you going to want to help you narrow down your choices to bring forward to the board? So I would want you to have as much information as possible so that you can bring forward the candidates at that time if you wanted the legal services committee to do, if they're doing that in their screening.
I just have two concerns and, and I don't know how to, what my thought are on the motion. One is, I don't think anybody's physical appearance has anything to do with their capabilities to be the general counsel or any other job.
Agreed.
Anywhere, for any organization at any time, number one. And when you record somebody, you're gathering a lot of information that can sway people's opinions that are not about the qualifications for the job. So that's number one. Number two, you're asking people now to do a whole bunch more work to apply for the job. We may want to do that. I mean, we want, might not want somebody that just takes their resume, attaches it, turns in the basic application and becomes a, a direct report to the school board. But we are raising the stakes, raising the price basically of people applying. But a lot of the motions we've made today were to expand the pool of people to apply. So I think on balance, largely for the first point, which I don't want any applicant for any school job or any organization anywhere to ever feel like what they look like has anything to do with their abilities to do a job or to get a job. And so I, I just in general would prefer to use that when we have a small set at the end and we're thinking, okay, we picked seven, but we only want to have three come in. Let's have those seven, if they choose, record an interview or do an audio recording or present their work in any manner that they see fit. Because I don't want this board to be swayed by any physical appearances or any of the other information that you would get through that method. So I, I've talked myself out of supporting this, but I would, would prefer to do this when we get to a smaller group of people. But I think when we get to a smaller group, we're going to invite them here anyway. Isn't that part of the plan?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks, Chair.
And I would be open to it being written, not video. I, I would just want the answers to those questions, not, I don't, had nothing to do with what they look like. Mrs. Alhade?
So in regards to the video, I, I am a bit concerned because we are trying to get more people to apply. And, and also when they do the video, the video doesn't just go to us. It's, it's publicly out there. And I know that this is a very public position. So you have to have thick skin, broad shoulders to, to be the general counsel of Broward County Public Schools. However, I think there could be a better cadence and I don't want to prevent someone from applying because of the video.
Would you want to make a friendly amendment to it? I don't mind it being written. Like I said, I just thought the video would be easier, but I don't mind that. Okay, Ms. Thompson?
I actually think the video component is incredibly important because a lot of what our general counsel does is communicate verbally with us on the dais. So giving a presentation allows us to understand how they verbally communicate ideas and thoughts. It's also, I don't think that difficult to create a video for 90% of the population, but I do think it's an imperative part of making sure that they can communicate with us. So I would not be in favor of getting rid of it.
Ms., Mrs. Bowman?
Okay, so if you could bring me up, this is with the app, initial application that they're going to have a video?
That, that's the motion.
Of questions, answering questions.
The main point was to get that information. So why are they, with specific questions? Why are they applying? What is their relevant experience applicable to Florida education law? And what is their relevant, relevant experience supervising a team?
So when someone applies for a job, generally they would have a cover letter, right? That would probably answer those questions if they were smart, that that would be included in there.
We can direct them to include that in their cover letter.
I mean, maybe a cover letter. I, you know, I was going to say so to Ms. Thompson's point about the video. We're diametrically opposed on this. I would never want to do that in a first round. That would make me say, nope, I'm not applying for this. So I, there's obviously certain people that are much more comfortable doing it. She does an excellent job of making videos. I would rather die than do it. So I, so I, I just think that we might be, like, maybe for a second round, once we've chosen our, once we've chosen the people that we want to talk to, if they, if we want to add a component like that. But to take people out in the first round, I don't like that. And I think they, they should, as a practitioner, be writing a cover letter explaining why they want the job and what their relevant experience is. Like, if you can't figure that out, then I don't think that they're a good fit.
Okay.
Mrs. Leonardo?
Thank you. Yeah, I was actually, I had cover letter in my notes. And, and the reason I, I support the idea of a cover letter is, like, I think those are very good questions, but I wouldn't, I'm also interested in other questions. So I, I would like, again, to continue with this philosophy of like, as broad of a pool as possible. Like, I would be interested to know their experience working with boards and, you know, reporting to nine people. You know, like, I think there is other questions that I, I would like to know that perhaps a cover letter could address. And I think there's also something to glean from what someone includes in a cover letter and what they don't include. So if they're not talking about those things that are very relevant to the position, we know that perhaps they're not, they don't have a full understanding of what the, what the position demands. To the communicating verbally piece, would we be conducting interviews in which they would communicate verbally with us?
You would let us know and we would follow your lead. So this board would decide if we're going to bring them here, interview in the public. So you will determine how we move through each stage of this process. And the will of the board will determine what that looks like for each candidate.
Right. And I think that's a much better assessment of someone's communication skills than recording a video, being able to answer que, I mean, I, I think in the last superintendent search, it was, it was really interesting for me on paper what I saw. And then in the one-on-one interviews that I had with the different candidates, my thoughts and feelings changed about the different candidates. So I think assessing their verbal communication abilities is much more relevant in an interview setting. So I support the, the concept of a cover letter. I, I'd actually like to make a substitute motion that the candidates would include a cover letter along with their application.
Second.
Okay, all, any public comment on the substitute motion? Dr. Lozano?
And in the cover letter, we're going to ask them to respond to those three questions?
No, that's not part of my motion.
All those, any, any board discussion? All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? No. Motion passes. Okay, so there'll be a cover letter with no direction. Okay, so the next thing, I, I think we covered a lot of this, but the role of the legal services committee. So I guess we just want to be clear. Here's what I have down here. So they will screen candidates, right? They will interview top candidate, well, we have to talk about this. So everybody is okay with the idea that the legal, the three board members from the legal services committee will be screening candidates based on rankings that are given by HR? Okay. The next question is, will the, the board members from the legal services committee interview top candidates identified from the screening? Or is that something that we want to happen with the whole board? Okay, so not just the legal, they're just going to bring us and we'll decide as the board who we want to interview? Okay.
Including Chair, and we talked about this earlier, some that they might have taken off the list and some that they might have put on.
Correct.
We still vote on the actual list that we want to move forward of candidates.
Mrs. Bowman?
Well, just to play devil's advocate, because I, I mean, the board needs to interview the candidates. But do we, in the interest of time, do we want to whittle it down and have an initial interview round for the committee? Or do you want to, because we're going to, we're going to whittle it down based on what the written response is, does, is?
So I, I just give some input. Some of the concerns, I've been through five searches. So I, I just give some input. Some of the concerns, I've been through five searches, actually six because of the General Counsel. And the concerns that board, all different variations of the board have had is that they didn't like not being part of the bigger picture.
Okay, so then I think we bring everyone.
So I think that's, you know, the idea is you'll, you'll bring recommendations. We'll go off of that. But if there's someone from the pool that we think needs to be included, it'll be part of that public discussion. And from there, we'll decide if we're interviewing three or two or what that looks like.
Okay, so then we're going to whittle it down anyway, kind of publicly through our discussion. So that's not, okay.
Yes.
Madam Chair. Yes. I just want to remind the board that the three board members from the Legal Services Committee, that those meetings will also be public meetings.
Yes, that was my other, because that was my question yesterday about sunshine. So they will be noticed meetings and they will be public.
If Legal Service Committee wants to meet together, then yes, those would have to be public meetings, correct, Ms. Batista? But if they screen individually.
Correct.
Then they could do that individually without a public meeting. So that's where we need some direction on Legal Services Committee's role as far as after your screening or during your screening. Do you want to meet to discuss that? Or do you want to individually screen and rank them? And then perhaps maybe you want to interview the top candidate you screen? Or you may want to bring those to the board to do interviews with all the top people you recommend. And then you wouldn't need a meeting, a public meeting with Legal Services Committee if you each ranked them individually. And then we brought forward to you the top candidates from each of the three, three board members, or however you want to recommend it come forward.
Mrs. Alhada. No, I think that the Legal Services Committee should meet, discuss, talk, evaluate, and then make the recommendations to the board where, then we interview.
Correct. Do you want to make a motion?
So I move that the Legal Services Committee, made up of the three board members, meet to evaluate potential candidates for General Counsel.
Second.
Second. Any public comment on the motion? Board member discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, so, all right, we did that. interim general counsel. Yes. No, we're, that was just a motion. We're not, when we finish all this, then we'll vote on the whole item. We're, we have three more bullet points.
I, I had some questions about, so what's happening at the November 12th meeting?
Dr. Lozano, do you want to, what, for, based on the motion that was passed, what will happen November 12th?
So at the November 12th meeting, we could give you an update on how many candidates that we've received that are applying. According to the timeline, if we did, the original timeline was that we would have, the ad would have been posted for about two weeks at that point, a week and a half, and we could give you an update on the number of candidates. And then Legal Services Committee, as we get the candidates, we can certainly forward you the resumes as we get them, or if you want them in one packet. So I don't know if you want them as we go or wait to the very end. And then the 12th, we could do a update. And then if you wanted to meet and discuss your screenings, you could certainly schedule time after the 12th or whatever your schedule would allow.
Okay, so really on the 12th, it's just an update. Are we getting names? Or is it just an update on how many people have applied?
We can provide whatever your, the board's direction is.
Can you make that as a board item?
Yeah, I could.
And then with the names? Because I think the point was, on the 12th, was to see internally, are we getting a big enough pool? And if not, we could have a discussion, did we want to move to external? That was, that was the motion that I made.
Okay, so what is the vote going to be on? If it's an item?
Well, we don't vote on all items. I mean, it was just to include on, well, I mean, but we wouldn't, we vote to accept things. We don't necessarily vote to, they would just be giving us a list of all of the people who have applied at that time.
Okay.
So we would get it. Yes.
Okay. I suppose, yeah, I, then I wonder like what role the Legal Services Committee has, because I think like that will really open us, I can envision us then having as a board, a discussion about all, like all of the candidates. I can see that happening. So.
The point was to determine whether we had enough candidates to move forward, or if we wanted to then go to an external search.
Which is what the item might be.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, yeah.
So that, that would be the way maybe to, to make the action of the item.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Batista.
As far as the item that will be presented to the board on the 12th, I, I believe that there is a shilling effect if you're going to actually provide names to the board. And I think maybe HR.
Just the number.
Right. The number and the number of qualified, you know, according to HR. But if you provide the names, sometimes people that otherwise would have applied, they may not feel com, even if they're not going to make the finalists, you know, they, they may not want to be out there.
Just on a different note though, isn't, when they apply, isn't that public?
True, but normally I think the press is, it takes, you know, doesn't ask those questions at that time.
Either way, so that's fine. So do we all agree just that it doesn't matter the names? I only said that because it was asked.
The only question Chair about that would be, we won't be done with the application window on the 12th of November, it sounds like.
Based on the timeline, how long, when does the window of application close?
So we had, tentatively had, and again, with the timeline that you would like, but we would post it definitely by the end of the week. It would run for the remainder of this week. Next week would be the, through the 31st, and then it could run through the 7th. Then it's up to, we could close out the timeframe then, and then give our Legal Services Committee, again, I need clarity, to see if you want to start looking at screening the resumes and such, because then you will have an idea by the 12th of your candidate pool.
Be way cool. If it closes on the 7th, the staff can meet and rank them as they're going along.
Yes.
Have PSC, the three members of the PSC meet before the 12th, and then we bring that. That's, sounds very feasible on a timeline. It would push the staff a little bit, and I'd be pushing some colleagues, or I'd be suggesting that the three members of that committee meet in a publicly noticed meeting to do that. But it'd be pretty cool on the 12th if there was a chance we had, you know, the opportunity. If it doesn't work, if there's one applicant and they're barely qualified, we might want to hire a recruiter or go do some other things. But it sounds to me like on this timeline, we could actually be at the point where we're considering, great, let's agree that this is the number of candidates PSC recommended or otherwise. And let's, here's the next two or three weeks to do the, the next rounds of interviews. That would be awesome.
Right. So we would need a meeting for the Legal Services Committee a week sometime then the week of the 3rd, maybe that Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
I'm sorry, I thought you said the application closed on November 7th?
Correct.
So wouldn't they have to meet between the 7th and 12th?
You'd have to meet on the 10th. Tuesday's a holiday.
I don't know what holidays are anymore, but yeah, that's great.
Veterans Day.
I'm not asking you to be, meet on any day. I'm just, the pertinent question is, can those three members meet between the 7th and the 12th to still give the staff enough time to do what they have to do to feed the PSC system? So it sounds like that's the 10th, the Friday?
It's Monday.
We're screening as we go.
I'm sorry, is Monday the 10th a holiday? Or is that not a holiday?
No, the Tuesday is the one.
So I think we need to ask the three members if they're available on the 10th. Otherwise, we can't do it on the 12th, right?
Correct.
I have a question also on that. So based on that discussion, the item coming to us on the 12th would be to select people to interview? Because that will change the cadence of the timeframe of the meeting. So that's, I just want us to be clear what we're looking at on the 12th. Because originally, I just wanted to know how many people, so that we knew whether we were continuing on the internal or if we needed to pivot and move to external. That was the point of the motion. So what would happen on the 12th if all of those things we just talked about happened?
If Legal Services Committee is able to meet prior to the 12th, then on the 12th, we could make a decision of which finalists then they would want to bring forward to the board to be interviewed by the board. If Legal Service Committee is not able to meet by the 12th, then we would definitely still, in both situations, give an update to the board on the number of candidates and then make a determination if based on the pool, we want to continue with the internal process? Or are we going to need to expand this, the process and go out to an external firm or keep reaching out to other candidates?
So I think we would be able to let you know the number of qualified candidates by the 12th, the, what the pool looks like. I would not want to put that time restraint on the Legal Services Committee to have that short period, to have to come back to that meeting with names of who's moving forward. I don't think that's enough time for them to be able to do that. That's just my opinion.
Yes, I tend to agree. I wasn't trying to rush that. I just wanted, I wanted enough time that if we are not getting a huge pool based on our own efforts, then we would need as a board to have the opportunity to pivot and say, no, we want to go externally. That was the whole point of, of that. So, but those of you that are on the Legal Committee, what are your thoughts?
I can go either way. I mean, I, I'm happy to meet on the 10th. I'm, I'm looking at my calendar. And we have something at Casey Wright on the 10th going on. So I mean, I don't, I don't see why we can't just, let me see, what's the time parameters here? 10 to 12? We have to be at Casey Wright?
Yes, it's the delegation.
The joint delegation conference? So, I mean, we'll, we'll be here anyway, right? So I mean, I, I, I can go either way. I can make myself available if, if my colleagues are, are willing as well.
Mrs. Leonardi.
I'm available.
I too can make myself available. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Dr. Holmes.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, the relevance of the Legal Service Committee meeting before the 12th? Because on the 12th, talent acquisition can give us the answer that we're looking for. And they can, I mean, I don't want to rush them and then, because we're, on the 12th, what we're looking for is, do we have adequate or enough qualified candidates to which talent acquisition can determine? We don't need Legal Services Committee to determine that. They're going to take those qualified applicants and determine which ones come to the board.
Well, I would say we could compromise. So if legal, the Legal Counsel Committee, the three board members could meet and look at the qualified candidates and determine, are they really qualified? And just come back with that piece. I don't, I think the 12th is too early to say, okay, we want to interview the, I, I think it's too much to add on, on that particular board meeting. But they could come back with what they, you know, how many they think are good, solid candidates. They don't have to necessarily on the 12th, bring us back who we would want to interview, which would require you'd have more than one meeting. I, you know, I hope that's okay.
Right. But Madam Chair, I thought talent acquisition is making that determination through their ranking system and then.
They are, but just because they're qualified doesn't mean that they're someone we think would be qualified for the job we're looking for. So the committee could meet and have that discussion and bring us their thoughts on that. Not necessarily recommendations, but just, yes, we have enough internally to finish the process this way, or no, we really think we should. Because the whole point of the 12th is, do we stay with internal or are we moving to an external process?
Okay, so they're, they're going to come back to us, the, the Legal Service Committee, not with recommendations as far as who we should interview, but whether or not, to answer the question, whether or not we have enough qualified candidates. Because I want to make sure that they don't come and we have a whole long discussion.
Correct. And trying to make sure of the same thing.
Right.
So, yes, Dr. Zeeman.
I'm just going to tell you my opinion about the search. I'm not going to have my time be the limiting factor in doing the speed of this search. So if we have to stay three hours later on the 12th and go through actual applications, let me just finish, please. There is a chance that we have lots of applicants for this job and the Legal Services Counsel meets and has a clear, clear break and comes back with X, excuse me, N number of people they want to interview after meeting on the 10th. And on the 12th, we decide to move forward with that list. But I don't, I don't want our time to be the limiting factor in, in getting to this. And that means if we have to have a 12-hour school board meeting on the 12th, I for one am, I don't want to be responsible for us not getting the best General Counsel in time before Ms. Batista goes away. And so I just, I don't know that that'll happen. But if it does happen, I personally am willing to spend the time to do whatever we need to do to get this process moved all the way through to completion.
Mrs. Alhada.
Well, and also to that point, I think we also have to keep in mind, if someone's applying for this, they're not going to be available forever. So we can't be dragging our feet. You know, you're going to be going into Thanksgiving, the holidays. So I think if we have strong candidates, that we should expedite our process. So I'm for whatever we need to do at the regular school board meeting on the 12th.
Madam Chair. Just one last comment.
Dr. Holmes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to gain understanding as to what we're doing. Because my understanding, based upon what's presented here, is that we're answering a simple question. Do we have enough candidates or do we continue screening? Now, if we're changing that goal on the 12th to also interview candidates as a board, and that's a whole different, that's a whole different ballgame. We can be here 14 hours. But if we're simply answering, do we have enough candidates? Because that's what we're trying to do. And then if we do, then Legal Services Committee is going to meet again and determine which ones they bring to us for interview. But if we're doing all of that on the 12th, then I think we all need to understand that. Because I'm, you know, I don't want to blur everything.
Yes. It seems like we're, we're sort of split on what happens there. So we probably need to, to make a motion and take a vote. So I'll make a motion. I move that the item that comes forward to us on the 12th is to determine whether we continue with the internal search or we move to an external search not about interviews.
Second.
Any public comment on the motion? Board comment on the motion? Dr. Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to understand your motion, Madam Chair, if this motion passed, then on the 12th, we're simply meeting to determine if we continue recruiting, if we go to an external source.
Correct.
And if we have adequate, whether or not we have adequate candidates.
Correct. And there would be a second meeting.
Correct. And, and subsequently, the Legal Services Committee, should we have sufficient candidate, will then meet subsequent to that meeting to determine which one, which ones come to us for a vote? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and part of the reason for that is that if they meet on the 10th, I don't think there's enough time for us as board members to go through all of the paperwork that would come to us by the 11th, which is holiday, even though we all work on it, it is a holiday, our staff isn't working, to be ready to vote on the 12th. I, I understand the need and we could have a special school board meeting if necessary to do that. But I just don't want to rush everything, because I don't think that we're in a place that it has to be so rushed. I, I don't mind if it's the next week or whatever. We're here for the next week for our organizational meeting, and that's only in the morning. So we could do a special school board meeting in the afternoon, which would then give us time to read everything and to really have a good discussion. I just, it's, it's important to me that we're not rushing it and trying to squeeze it in somewhere that we don't have the time that we need. So that was why I made the motion. So it's been moved and seconded. Any other comment? Dr. Zeeman.
Thanks so much, Chair. I wonder, as a friendly-ish amendment, if you would take out the last sentence. I don't think we want to say what we're not going to do. I think we can say what, that you want an item brought to do what you described. I don't think it's appropriate or fair to say that we're not going to do something. Members of this board can make motions at any meeting for virtually anything. And so if, if, if there's divine intervention in the meeting on the 10th and the meeting on the 12th, there's three clear candidates, we've all read the material and we want to move forward in the step, again, that's a long shot. But if that happens, I'd like the authority to be able to do that. And so if you would agree to amend your motion to say we will bring an item to make a determinative about, about hiring external resources, you know, as you said, I just, I don't want the second half of that motion, because that really ties the hands of, of your colleagues.
So I don't mind doing that as long as it's clear that the expectation is not for the committee to bring us recommendations. That's not what, my motion is to keep recommendations from coming to us on the 12th.
I don't think you can do that. I literally don't think a member of this board can say something will not happen. I don't think that that's legal.
Ms. Batista.
I think it's up to the board to figure out what it is that, you know, how, how you want the process to proceed. If, you know, if you feel that, I mean, you, you are tying the hands of the board members at that point by saying that, you know, at that point by saying that, you know, you don't want a certain item to come forward, even if it were, if it would happen to be ready to come forward at the time.
But you...
But it's up to the board whether they want to approve that.
It's legal. I mean, that's the question. Is it legal? Okay, thank you. Ms. Thompson.
I'm fine with your motion, as it currently is.
Dr. Holmes.
Madam Chair, I support your motion, because if we do anything otherwise, then week five through seven or eight, might as well we forget it, because we're saying, get rid of all of that process. I don't want to rush anything, because we are now... If we do anything otherwise, we are now removing what we felt to be the role of the Legal Services Committee, to have time to look at all of these things, bring us recommendation, and for us to have time to go through it. So, I think your motion is very wise, and I think it would be best, as a board, that we support your motion and continue with the recommendations, and discuss these recommendations presented by talent acquisition.
Any other comment on the motion?
Can you just repeat your motion?
If I can remember it. The motion was to... For the meeting on the November 12th, for the committee to bring back to us... Trying to think of what my motion was.
Whether or not we have sufficient...
Right, for the item that comes back on the 12th of November is for us to determine whether we're going to continue with the internal search, based on the number of qualified and acceptable is not the right... The number of qualified candidates, or would we be moving to an external search? We are not looking for recommendations from the committee to come to us on the 12th. We could do a special school board meeting and do that the following week. Mrs. Alhada.
I just think that it would behoove us to have the Legal Services Committee meet on the 10th, and share their recommendations with the board on the 12th, and then on the 18th, the board to have a special school board meeting to do the interviews. I think it's too quick of a time period to determine whether we're flipping to an external firm. Let the process happen. I mean, unless the Legal Services Committee comes back and says, we don't have anybody.
Well, that's the point of the 12th, right.
Right, but I don't think, to Ms. Batista's point, like, you don't prevent them from giving us their recommendations of the qualified candidates. Let's just keep the process moving. Doesn't hurt us to keep... To give us the information, let us know who the qualified candidates with all of the backup information.
That was...
Right, on the 12th.
But when we made that suggestion, everybody said it was a bad idea to put the list of people's names. Like, we're going in a circle here. We had that discussion, and we said, no, we didn't want people to have their name on there. So, Ms. Bowman.
Well, just to clarify that, so what are our... I mean, at some point, we're going to have to know the names. So, do we have to make that public and put every single one of those on an agenda item, or is this something that we could have internally on a email?
Once they apply, it's public information.
Okay. But do we want to put... Are we putting it on an agenda item when we're... Or are we... I mean, what does the process look like moving forward? So, if we identify we got six qualified candidates on, you know, we meet on the 10th, we, like, report out, it gets put on the B item for the 12th. Ms. Batista, with it.
So, I think there is a difference between releasing the entire list of every single applicant versus releasing a list of who are the finalists, or the, you know, the qualified applicants that are... I mean, those people, I think, have to make a decision and figure out whether they do want their name out there. But once you become a finalist, I think everyone expects that you will be... Your name will be released.
So, that should definitely be included in the information for them.
But the Legal Counsel isn't deciding the finalists, the whole board is. They're just bringing to us recommendations of who we should interview, which would then require us to spend a lot of time looking through it, which is why I made the motion, not to push it to the 12th, because they're meeting on the 10th, there's no one working on the 11th, and the meeting is on the 12th. There's just not enough time for them to be able to give that information, and then staff to turn around and put an item together that gives us all that information. And for us to really read it and make a good decision in Monday morning. I mean, that was the point of the motion, is it makes sense to do it on the 18th, which bumps it to a special meeting on the next week, where we can then do that. It's just, on the 12th, we made a motion to ask them to report back to us, what does that pool look... Just terms of numbers, how many qualified people? So, we could have an idea, are we doing well getting candidates as internal, or should we have a discussion on, maybe we need to add an external company to this so that we can expand our pool? That was the point of all of this. Mrs. Leonardi.
Okay, I'm trying to try to bring this up. So, I think we have to decide, and I think we decide by voting on this motion. Like, what direction... What is the goal of the November 12th meeting? So, is the November 12th meeting, is the goal of that to decide if this internal process is working, or if we need to move to an external process? Or is the goal of the 12th to expedite our process and move, keep things moving? If we decide that the goal for the 12th is to make a decision whether or not we think the processes, the internal process is working, and whether or not we want to go external, I don't really see the point of the Legal Services Committee meeting on Monday. Like, I'm happy to do it, but I just don't know... I think it creates a weird dynamic, too, where, like, the committee has, like, more information than the rest of the board. So, I think we have to decide. I err on the side of, like, let's make a decision whether or not we're staying internal or external on the 12th. Like I said earlier, you know, last week, I was very much operating with the desire to move things very quickly. Now, I feel that we need to do things carefully and strategically, and move with a lot of care. So, that's where I am on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Rupert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Why couldn't we actually call them candidate number one, two, three, four? You know, you're still identifying people that you want. If it gets out, it gets out. I don't want it to be a... Something that keeps somebody from working for us, it would be a really good fit, because they don't want their name going out. My other thoughts on what Ms. Leonardi said, I believe that the November 12th meeting, the committee meets after that meeting, and then we do a special meeting for the 18th. I think that would give us plenty of time. It's an extra week, it's holidays, and, you know, I don't want to be rushed through this process. And I think that we do need to keep moving through the process, and at times, be savvy enough to know when we need to pull back a little bit on the horse, instead of an airplane.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those opposed, they no. No. Hash, I think two descending votes. Right. Okay. So, motion passes. Okay, the next item that we need to talk... So, are you good on all of that part? So, now we're to the general interim general counsel bullet.
Right, just to verify. So, on the 12th, we're giving an update on the number of candidates that have qualified for the position?
Yes.
Okay. Is Legal Services Committee still meeting on the 10th?
I mean, it's up to the Legal Services...
Or do you want to meet on the 12th? I heard that thrown out there.
12th is an RSBA.
Mrs. Alhada.
If the Legal Services Committee is going to meet on the 10th, and they're going to be talking about the candidates, and all their documents, and all the names, and everything like that, it's kind of defeating what you just voted on. So, they should not be meeting, if that's the case.
Not necessarily on 12th. We have a regular school board meeting. They would be meeting at 8:00 at night. But it's up to you, whenever you want to meet, but sometime before the end of the week, I would think, because we would want enough time for us to be able to read before the 18th.
Right. Correct. I would suggest you decide when the board would like to interview the finalist, and then you can kind of work backwards, when the Legal Services Committee would need to confer with the candidates.
Okay, let's see.
And you've...
So, on the time... On your timeline, what do you have as interviewing candidates?
I have, you could use, if you want... I was trying to be cognizant of your all's time, when you're already meeting. On the 18th, you have the organizational meeting, if you wanted to extend that. Otherwise, you've got December 2nd, the 9th. I mean, you've got three weeks in December. And I'm not sure we have a... Is the board meeting solidified on the 16th of December? I don't know when is December... Oh, you've got to wait till November's meeting.
And then I also believe a lot of them are in FSBA that weekend in Tampa.
Which weekend? Thank you. Okay. So, then that would give you then, either Legal Services Committee, could we meet after the regular school board meeting, the 13th or 14th? We need time to schedule interviews with candidates, so keep that in mind. When Legal Services Committee gives their list, you can come back anytime. You've got the week of your 17th, the week of the first, or the week of the 8th.
So, I... But I thought we were... The discussion was on the 18th, which is our organizational meeting. We would have a special school board meeting to discuss what the Legal Committee had brought forward to us. So, they're going to have to meet before, so either the 13th or the 14th.
So, what we could do is have each of the Legal Services Committee do their rankings of their recommendations. We can collect that from them individually, tabulate it all together, and bring that to the 18th to share their results, so...
They wanted to...
If they want to collaborate, bring one, or individually, that's the choice of the board.
I think, I'm pretty sure we made a motion in this item, that they would meet together and bring us a recommendation, not to do that. So, they're going to have to meet either the 13th or the 14th.
Correct.
You all have... And could they do that virtually? Do they have to be?
It's a... I believe it has to be in person, because, and it's open to the public as well. And then also, Chair, can you help staff clarify? Will Ms. Leonardi serve as the point person for that committee as it relates to the board?
Say that again.
I think someone will need to facilitate that meeting, and if it's a board member, we're going to need to know as staff who to run the items by, unless I'm mistaken. Ms. Batista.
So, someone would probably need to serve as the chair of the group, or the point person of the group, if that's necessary? Or, I don't know what HR, you know, has in mind. They could... There's only three board members, so they could provide all the information to all three of them. I don't know that you'd necessarily need, you know, a chair, per se.
Could HR facilitate the meeting?
If that's the other board, we can facilitate the meeting.
Right, and then you'd have the information to write the item up to bring to us.
And also, HR would have to, you know, take the minutes, because there are minutes that will be required, because it's a...
Madam.
Mrs. Alhada.
It's never been done that way. A board member is the chair. So, if Ms. Leonardi wants to be the chair, or we want to vote on who's going to be the chair, I think Ms. Leonardi should be the chair for that.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Holmes.
I move that board member Leonardi is the chair of the Legal Services.
Second. Any public comment? Board member comment? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
There's a leash.
All right. Okay. Quickest vote ever. Okay, so, are you good on that?
Are you going to decide on a date for them to meet?
Oh, yes. Did you... The 13th or the 14th?
Chair, we can go through the committee chair, and make sure we get quorum from the rest, and we'll publicly notice and schedule. I don't think you have to determine that right now.
Okay. So...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I disagree, because I don't want my schedule to fill up between now and then. What are the dates that are being proposed?
13th and 14th.
November 13th through the 14th.
Okay, I cannot do the 13th.
Okay.
So...
That's the only day I could do. Only three of you.
Madam Chair, we didn't vote on the motion, I don't think, did we? We voted?
Yes, it passed unanimously.
So, can we do the 14th? Do we need to vote to do it on the 14th?
I don't think it's up to us to vote, it's up to you.
Okay, can we do it on the 14th? Yes, thank you. Okay.
Perfect. Okay. With eight minutes left before the workshop starts, we have to finish up with the interim, the discussion about an interim general counsel. So, there's a couple of questions. Is the... So, interim has happened a couple of different ways. One way is that we went out, just like we would for the actual position, and looked for an interim. Another way is we just task assigned someone. So, I think, first, if staff will... You made mention of this already. So, have you... Is there someone? It was a question Dr. Holmes had earlier. Is there someone internally that could be task assigned to the interim general counsel?
Yes, there is.
Okay, perfect. So, there is that possibility. The other possibility is, again, the same thing. Internally, do we want HR to look for an interim general counsel, or do we want to go for an outside firm? So, those are the kind of... And we need to have an interim or task assigned by the time Ms. Batista leaves, which is January 9th. Right? Ms. Thompson.
My preference would be it was a task assigned person.
Okay. Doc... Mrs. Alhada, and Dr. Holmes.
I think we can do, try to do a task assigned, but I think we need to allow whoever who wants to possibly do it to come forward, that it's a equal opportunity to then have the board decide who would be tasked assigned, if there's more than one person that would like to do it.
Okay. So, would we want an application process for tasks, or for interim?
So, again, if we continue with the internal process, you're looking at probably three to six weeks, someone serving as an interim, right? If we need an interim after January 9th, right? So, you're not looking for an extended period of time. If on the 12th, we decide to go external, then you're extending the time we need a interim, so this conversation may be better served to have on the 12th, once we make that decision to stay internal or external. Because that may determine if you want to advertise for an interim or not, depending on the amount of time we may anticipate needing an interim general counsel.
Okay. Dr. Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, I don't see why we can't do it simultaneously, where we gather interest in interim, just in case we have to go that route. And I would also prefer that HR, as well as Ms. Batista, provide recommendation for interim, for those who may qualify for interim.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that, one, we simultaneously seek interest for the interim position, if we have to use an interim, and that Ms. Batista and HR provide recommendations at the appropriate time for interims.
Is there a second? Okay. And I'll just say, I don't want to be premature in looking for an interim, because I wouldn't want to advertise for an interim and then not need them, because you're kind of giving false hope. I don't know if hope's the right word, but, you know, giving someone the idea that there would be a position for them, and you're not even really sure if you're going to need that or not. So, I think it's important to know where we want to go with it, but I don't know if we want to start looking right now for an interim general counsel, because we don't need one right now. We don't know if we're going to need one at all. So, anybody, any other thoughts? Board members, any motions you want to make? Mrs. Leonardi?
This is going to be controversial, but given our, our history, I'm wondering if, if anyone wants to entertain, and I don't even know where I am on this, the idea of requiring that the interim does not apply for the position. I only bring that up because it's been, you know, an issue here in the past. And I, again, I don't have, I don't know where I am on that. I'm just wondering if any, anyone wants to entertain that.
So being a person who's been here for a couple of times and got slammed on changing our minds on that, I wouldn't want to make that a requirement, because you, we found a superintendent that we liked as an interim and decided to make them the permanent one. So I wouldn't want to tie our hands that way, first of all. It, it eroded the public trust, because we said one thing and we did something else. And I, I don't know that the pool is going to be that large, that we want to, to make it even that much smaller. So I personally wouldn't be in favor of doing that.
And then I had another comment. Um, so I, I very much support the idea of doing a task assignment. I think right now, if we're doing an internal search process for the, the general counsel position, I don't want any kind of distraction from that search, so I would support a, a task assignment.
I agree, I don't, I don't, do we need to do a motion on that right now? Do you need direction on that, or should we come, cross that bridge when we?
Yeah, we don't need to make that decision today. We can talk about that as we move forward in the process.
Okay, on the twelfth, when we get a better idea of what the timeline might look like, we can revisit that topic. Okay, I think we have checked off all my little boxes here. So all those in motion, all those in favor of item number two with amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously at eleven fifty-eight.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to, so, oh. Okay, hold on. The scheduled meeting, order of business for this special school board meeting of the School Board of Broward County, Florida, has been completed. Seeing no obligation, I now adjourn this special school board meeting. We are going to take a recess to get prepared for the workshop.
...
Our primary focus is to create a safe and productive environment for all participants. Please be reminded of the exit doors that are clearly marked for emergency exiting. While in the boardroom, refrain from obstructing the exit doors. All attendees must occupy a seat with the exception of media. Once the boardroom has reached its seating capacity, attendees will be directed to a designated overflow area. Upon activation of the fire alarm system, please exit from the room in an orderly fashion and continue to exit the building and remain outside until the authority that has jurisdiction has deemed the building safe to return. Thank you for your cooperation. Board member Rupert will now introduce her school to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Mrs. Rupert?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce Pompano Beach Elementary School for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, but whatever is just or all.
You may now be seated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. As we prepare to begin this school board workshop, we are reminded that our vision is 100% proficiency for all our students. As an A-rated school district, we begin the vital task of sustaining this achievement. We will continue educating all students to reach their highest potential. Our theme this year is Believe in Power, Achieve One Broward. Today's workshop will work in accordance with School Board Policy 1020 and the board will review the items as advertised and presented by the superintendent. Our first item for discussion is Facility Conditions Assessment. I now turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members, and the public. As you will see in today's presentation, this Facility Condition Assessment, or FCA, represents a critical component of our redefining schools. The FCA provides a comprehensive, data-driven view of the physical conditions of our schools, allowing us to prioritize repairs, guide capital investments, and ensure our facilities align with our instructional and operational needs. This assessment is a living document, and as each school's evaluation is completed, we update both the list and the public website to reflect the most current data. We plan to bring quarterly updates to the board so that you can continue to monitor the progress and see how the information evolves as projects are completed. Our long-range master planner will use this data to assist the board in evaluating the best long-term options for our facilities, whether that means reinvestments, consolidation, or modernization to support our continued redefining schools' efforts and ensure fiscal and operational sustainability. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Paul to walk us through the details of our assessment and the next steps.
Good afternoon. Thank you Superintendent, Board Chair, Ms. Hickson, Board members. It's an amazing opportunity we have here to look at this condition assessment and actually see across the district where we stand. As you know, the process has been ongoing since the beginning of 2025, and we are scheduled to complete the final reports by the end of 2025, fourth quarter. We have here our amazing team that have worked so diligently to make sure that we provide you a quality product. We have Ms. Sonya Coley, she's our task assigned Executive Director of Capital Programs, Mr. Bill Champion from Bureau Veritas, I've been calling it Veritas and all other kind of names, but it's Veritas, Ahmed Owasi, Bureau Veritas, and Ashley Carpenter from Atkins and Realis. I will hand it over to Ms. Coley to get the presentation started.
Thank you, Mrs. Paul.
We need to get the presentation started. Okay, thank you. There we are.
This presentation aims to update the board on the Facility Condition Assessment, FCA, and Facility Condition Index, FCI, for schools involved in the redefining initiative. The intent is to share the rationale for the FCA to support future planning and decision-making.
Okay, sorry.
Number three. Go to the agenda, please. Next slide. Thank you. Through this agenda, we will review what is a facility condition assessment, what an FCA can do for a district, how is an FCA completed, projected project costs, facility condition index, the FCA redefining, next steps, and conclusion. With that, I will now hand the presentation over to Mr. Champion to continue.
Good afternoon. A facility condition assessment is a data-driven evaluation of the buildings, building and infrastructure. It's a systematic inspection and analyses based on the systems, the components, their age, configuration, their exposure, their usage, and their performance, with the goal of providing a full accounting of the current conditions, the needs, and their corrective actions. This is conducted not just for the current conditions and the deferred maintenance, but also looking ahead to future conditions and long-term projections of needs for those buildings and systems. In general, an FCA is provided by an independent third-party company, organization, because it provides objectivity. It provides an industry-standard, structured approach to coming up with a structured, long-term list of needs. So essentially, the benefits of the Facility Condition Assessment is that it provides an understanding of the building's needs, current and changing. It advises, it builds, it creates an asset registry, asset inventory for full asset management, and that can be carried, tracked, and managed, not only today, but again, throughout long-term usage of the facilities. There is the aspect of safety, that's a part of every Facility Condition Assessment, and this is not just fire or life safety, safety of the hazards that may be present at the locations, but also safety of the assets, and safety of, you know, the usage of the building as codes change, conditions change, standards change throughout time. So that increased asset management lends itself to structured views and management of all the building systems and components throughout the lifetime of the building, not only their maintenance, but also their replacement. Looking out a bit further, the potential outcomes for the Facility Condition Assessment are manifold. They've got a lot of uses and beyond just the individual onsite usage, it's basically a long-term strategic planning tool. It's a decision-making tool that has outcomes of prioritized list of repairs and replacements for all the schools, but it arms the district with a list of projects, current and future, that need to be taken on to manage all the buildings and the critical mission of the schools. The objective data-driven analysis allows, you know, this to be a tool for justification of long-term capital plans, budgeting, bond issuance, levies. So this is basically the place where you would get the support and the analytical defense for the asset management and needs and compliance going forward. All right. In talking about how it's completed, the Facility Condition Assessment is a comprehensive examination of all building systems, school structures. So it begins with some pre-assessment work, some pre-survey work, where we mine work orders, gather data, look at what's been done before. We hit the field, we, I don't know if she's showing an iPad here, but we've got a systematic inspection of all the building systems and components. Our team of engineers and architects, armed with a structured approach that is captured in our data collection tool, walk each building, and they're assessing the building systems and components. They assess the foundation, the substructure, the things below the building, the actual frame, the superstructure of the building, the skin of the building, the doors, the windows, the facades, and the roof. We then move into an analysis of the interiors, the finishes, walls, ceilings, any interior construction, and then the team looks at the services of the building, and they are HVAC, heating, cooling in the building, there is ventilation, we're looking at conveyances, we're addressing the electrical, you know, the 208, 277, or 120. So we're looking at all the low voltage, high voltage systems, and we are assessing special construction, kitchen equipment, and then finally, we're getting to the site. We're looking at the flatscapes, the hardscapes, the playfields, athletic structures onsite. We're taking that data and we're providing conditions for each of them, excellent, good, fair, poor, and failed. We are assigning a cost of repair or replacement, we're defining what that corrective action is, and we're doing that for each asset in the building. Right now, we're at more than 120,000 assets aligned items, each having 10 or so attributes describing their current condition and their future recommended replacement. And as we get to the cost estimation, we, for each of the corrective actions, we have a basic cost, a construction cost for each of those items and then corrective actions, but please allow me to hand it over to Mrs. Carpenter for our projected project cost.
Thanks, Bill. The cost that you will see on the school cluster slides in the column marked "projected project cost" is not the sum of the costs that Bureau Veritas has estimated for each individual deficiency. However, their costs are the starting point for that projected project cost. Their individual deficiency amounts represent what it would cost if PPO were to send someone out to fix the deficiency. In a lot of cases, the Office of Capital Programs would need to scope a project for design by an architect and construction by a general contractor, and really, lessons learned from the SMART program have shown that there is necessary ancillary scope in order to meet code and receive a project permit. That increases the construction costs as well as the soft costs that are shown here. Let me give you an example. So BVTA has indicated that a particular air handling unit or AC unit needs to be replaced in five years. They've included the cost of replacement as well as an escalation factor from now until five years from now. If the district decides to do a renovation project at this school, including a whole list of HVAC needs, then there are additional considerations. The architect will include a replacement of 20 lineal feet of ductwork per unit, which is in line with the district's design criteria. The unit might need to be larger, and there could be space constraints, and that adds to the overall costs. Temporary air might be needed when multiple units are being replaced. And in Atkins' projected project cost, all of this ancillary scope has been added. We've also added the design and management fees, the contractors' markups for general requirements and general conditions. General requirements is typically their staffing, and general conditions is typically includes such items like temporary site facilities or safety considerations, compliance, allowances for the bonds, insurance permitting, and the projected project cost might be three or four times the raw hard cost that BVTA has assigned. The sum of the projected project cost for the 41 schools in the presentation is about $2 billion for the 10-year period. In fact, the preliminary report results are indicating that the 10-year projected project cost is likely, for the district, is likely to be over $10 billion. Bill will now continue the presentation with the definition of the Facility Condition Index.
Great, thank you, Ashley. As a result of the FCI, and the, sorry, the Facility Condition Assessment and the FCA process, one of the key outcomes is a Facility Condition Index, which is an FCI. This FCI speaks to the overall health of each building based on its condition. It's an industry-standard metric that the FCA provides, and you'll see it across all assessments of any character. It is essentially a metric that gives you on a scale of 1 to 100% the relative ranking or relative needs of the building. It's determined by taking the individual need or corrective actions summed in that building and dividing it by the cost of replacement for that building. A lower FCI represents a building that's in great condition. A brand-new building would have a zero FCI, and a building that's completely failed and at replacement cost to repair that building would be at 100%. All right. So, yeah. Yeah, great. So here, we've got our basic calculation for FCI, and it is the cost of deferred maintenance over the replacement value, and that's times 100, that'll give you the percentage. Here, just spending a little time on this, the general industry standard, the green, yellow, orange, red, the green would be a building that's in good condition, and it's new or well-maintained. And the yellow, of course, is anywhere between 5 and 10% of that replacement cost, and that is subject to wear, but still functioning. As you start to get into the orange, it's subject to long-term wear, and then the red, of course, it's reached the end of its useful life. So, you know, just a quick example of that, at a school that you've got several buildings, but you've got one building that is 25,000 square feet, let's say the replacement cost of that building is $10 million. If you've got needs of $500,000, that puts that building in the green category. Let's say everything is great in that building, but you only need windows, that building is well-maintained, and is in the green range with just one basic need. As you start to add other things, HVAC is a large one. If you start to add other items that are in need, that quickly gets into the yellow-orange range, and those things will cause a building to require reconstruction. Now, because those needs, those numbers are large, you know, telling you that you need, you know, 30% of $10 million, $3 million in the next year, is usually not the way it's done. For that reason, we look at the 10-year window, so you can plan for that upcoming need. The combined 10-year FCI for the district is 21.4%. So that means, on average, all the buildings in the district are in that, subject to wear and tear, and approaching the end of its useful life.
The schools and clusters provided in this presentation came from the list and the redefining presentation to the board on August 26, 2025. We will look at each cluster individually with the FCI's by school, focusing on the FCI at the 10-year mark and the projected project costs to address the deficiencies in that period. Slide is not working.
Can you go to the slide? Okay, there we go. We're having some technical difficulties with the slides. Go ahead.
This is a map showing the four clusters of elementary schools from the redefining presentation in August, and I will hand it back over to Bill to walk us through the FCI results.
Okay, the first thing you'll notice on this slide is the red numbering. So you can see in the upper right-hand corner, the numbers have been revised, and essentially, when we first turned this in, the procedure is to get this over, and then while it's in your hands, we're still working. So this is a great opportunity to highlight that this is a work in progress. The data is in our living database, and these numbers are changing as time goes on. So they're usually going higher, but there are a couple of reasons that numbers will change. In just the past month, these numbers have changed, and the changes are really two main reasons. Work is being done, projects are being completed, work is happening on a daily basis, and we're updating the cost of that work. The second is that we've got supplemental analyses happening in the background. We're getting updated data from BlueFrent, the roofing company, we're getting updated data from structural analyses that are happening at individual schools of concern. So as that data comes in, we update our report. The best place and the way the assets are managed is in a living database. If you get a report, it is a snapshot, it is what happened at that time, but the living database allows you to track and manage those assets through time. So a quick refresh also on this slide of what those colors mean. The green, of course, is new or well-maintained, and you can see in the current year, four of the five schools in these clusters are new or well-maintained. They are not new, they are well-maintained in this case, and you've got one, North Fork Elementary, which is subject to some wear and tear today, but still is in serviceable working condition. You can see as one year, five year, 10 years, we move from left to right, buildings get worse, conditions get worse, buildings rarely get better without any capital, and they get worse over time as exposed to conditions and usage. So you can see in the five-year period, for Bennett, that one is approaching the end of its useful life, and that is in the five-year period. You can see as you move into the 10-year period, North Fork joins it in that condition rating, and you've got some others that are approaching the end of their useful life. You can see the projected project cost is, Ashley discussed, and you can see that in general, this overall cluster, the weighted average of this is 25.8, and that's in the high-orange category. All right. This cluster is not as bad as the first. The weighted average FCI for this cluster is 14.2. You can see the range of FCI's are from 9% to 21%, and none of these are near their end of useful life, but again, as they move out year over year, they will get worse, and they need capital applied before they get to that red category. All right. The combined FCI, the weighted average FCI for this cluster is 15.4, just a little worse than the last, and you can see that the near southwest cluster has FCI's ranging from 11 to 19%. Again, with all of them in the 10-year period, subject to long-term wear, and approaching the end of their useful lives. The average FCI for the central south elementary cluster is 20.9, and you've got one that actually starts out in the subject-to-wear-and-tear category, and that is Sunshine Elementary. Again, they all change conditions at some point in the process. The FCI's in the 10-year category are ranging from 17 to 29%. I will now hand it over to Ms. Coley to introduce the middle school clusters.
All right, thank you, Bill. Next, we'll take a look at the middle school clusters from redefining. And this is the map showing the four clusters of middle schools from the redefining presentation in August. And back to you, Bill, so you can walk us through the FCI's.
All right. For the northwest middle cluster, the combined 10-year FCI is 19.5. Four of the five schools are well-maintained and in a good category below 5%, but you've got one that is moving into these, some wear and tear, but still serviceable in the one-year category. In the 10-year category, they are all in the subject to long-term wear or tear, and they are moving into the approaching end-of-useful-life category. And you can see for each one of these, you've got the projected project cost. For the west middle cluster, the FCI is 24.7. Two of the three are well-maintained, one has wear and tear but is serviceable. The rest, five and 10-year, are in the subject to long-term wear and tear and approaching the end of their useful lives. The southwest middle cluster has a 10-year FCI of 16.5. For the most part, they are all in, currently in the well-maintained category. As they move to the right into the five-year, all but one moves out of that condition rating and out of that FCI range, and once they approach the 10-year category, they are all in the long-term wear and approaching the end-of-useful-life FCI category. Next, we have the southeast middle cluster. These currently are well-maintained. However, Attics Middle quickly moves into long-term wear and tear over the next five years and actually into approaching the end and at the end of its useful life in the 10-year period. You can see the projected project cost there, and that one, all these schools, you can see are changing their condition and FCI scores over the 10-year period. Ms. Coley?
Thank you, Bill. Now we will move into the high schools, followed by non-traditional, alternative high schools, and behavior change schools, along with the corresponding maps showing the locations from the redefining presentation in August.
For the high schools, we've got three high schools in the redefining schools. The 10-year FCI for the cluster is 27.3. That is high, and higher than the average of all schools in the district. You can see that very quickly, the schools get into approaching the end of their useful lives in the five-year period. However, two of the three schools are at and beyond their useful lives in the 10-year period. period. So these get pretty bad, or they're in the bad condition for FCI's, and you can see the high projected project cost for each of these schools. All right, the alternative high schools, same here. We've got schools that start out well-maintained, and that's this one year, but as we move into the five and ten-year, they are all approaching their useful lives, and you can see the project cost at the right. For the behavioral change schools, they are all well-maintained currently. Only one moves into the subject to wear and tear category with, but still in its serviceable life, and then they move into approaching the end of their useful lives. Ms. Wanda?
So let's talk about next steps. So what you see here is kind of the, the cadence of our next steps. Supplemental analyses, we're finalizing additional studies such as roofing, structural analysis to include that in this assessment, and, you know, making sure that they're included, but also that they're comprehensive. All individual school FCA reports will be completed and submitted by the end of the calendar year. These reports will serve as the foundation for future capital planning and project prioritization that was spoken, or spoken in the presentation. Cost estimation. In the first quarter of two thousand twenty-six, we will conduct a detailed cost estimation tailored for BCPS. This will ensure the financial projections accurately reflect the district's specific requirements and market conditions. So again, this is lessons learned from the previous bond program. Migrate to integrated assets. So we plan to migrate the facility data to Maximo in the second quarter of two thousand twenty-six. This is in conjunction with the Maximo reboot. This integration will assist in streamlining asset management, maintenance, tracking, and project implementation across the district. Maintaining up-to-date data is an ongoing priority, as you have seen throughout the presentation with the changes shown in red. As projects are completed and conditions evolve, the database will be updated to reflect these changes. And by the third quarter of two thousand twenty-six, we will work closely with the master planner to develop actionable projects. This collaborative approach will help maximize efficiency and align capital improvements with strategic goals, and that would be in alignment with redefining in that process. In conclusion, the individual facility final reports will be submitted by the end of the calendar year. Quarterly updates will be provided to the board so that you can see where we are. So this is a living document, and I think it's very important that we stay out front and in front of this and provide the board with information. You may use the link on this slide to access the FCI data for the schools in this presentation. The link contains five hundred and, or contains FCI scores by building, which is more detailed than the presentation data. So what we try to do here is just roll up the data for you, but we have, how many data points, you said?
A hundred and twenty thousand.
A hundred and twenty thousand different elements that go into this. And then we can click, can you click the link so we can show you what the website looks like? It will be updated continuously, and all data is final, will be finalized at the end of this year. So if you can click, click that and scroll down. Oh, congratulations, okay. And scroll down. And so you can see Addicts Middle School and so forth. So this is a work in progress. It's a lot of information we'll put up here, but these are the redefining schools that we wanted you to have access to, and each school is like a book in terms of all of the different data we collected. We will do an executive summary document to kind of codify the facility condition assessment, and that will be inclusive of all, all schools. So at this time, I welcome your questions.
Thank you. We have one public comment, and that is Ms. Willicia Schuman.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Dr. Hepburn and esteemed board leaders, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I rise today not in opposition, but in partnership with a clear call for clarity, accountability, and equity in how we interpret and act on the facility condition assessment presented today. On page ten, the Facility Condition Index, FCI, defines, defines any score above thirty percent as requiring reconstruction. Yet across pages thirteen to twenty-nine, we see schools with FCI's well above twenty percent, some nearing thirty percent that are not flagged for urgent action. That's a red flag. We need a transparent matrix that links FCI scores to specific interventions so our communities know what to expect and why. On page thirteen, Walker Elementary has a ten-year FCI of seventeen point eight percent. While on page sixteen, Sunshine Elementary has a significantly high FCI of twenty-eight point eight percent, yet Walker is projected to receive nearly ten million more in funding. That's a discrepancy that demands explanation. Pages twelve, eighteen, and twenty-four presents capacity usage maps that are visual, dense, and lack context. There is no clarity on how enrollments, trends, special programs, our community needs factors into these numbers. Without that, we risk making decisions that look efficient on paper but feel inedigable on the ground. On pages twenty-six through twenty-eight, non-traditional schools serving some of our most vulnerable students are grouped together without acknowledging their distant, distinct facility needs. That's not just a data issue, that's a dignity issue. Pages thirty-one references link to site that doesn't exist, and pages twenty-nine and thirty outline a timeline with a gap between final report and, and implementation. What happens between quarter one and quarter three of two thousand and twenty-six, who's accountable? Finally, page thirty-two lists board members but doesn't clarify who is overseeing FCA decisions. We need clarity, not confusion, in this critical window. I urge the board to correct these inconsistencies before any decisions are made. Our family deserves transparency, our students deserve equity, and our schools deserve a plan rooted in truth, not just tables. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mrs. Alhadeff.
Okay, so my first question is regard, and I know the smart bond projects are not in here, but I just want clarification that the completion is when, January two thousand twenty-six?
Completion, just to clarify, completion of the smart bond program?
Yeah.
So the board declared it complete at the end of October. It will roll over into our capital program, and that information is included in the FCA.
Okay, so, but I know the board had a resolution to say it was complete, but in reality, though, there is a certain amount of projects that are still outstanding. Could we get a list of those projects that are going to be rolled over, and how much money are we talking about?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And so Dr. Hepburn talked about the long-range master plan. How is that different from the FCA, and when will that be coming forward? How much does it cost? Where are we in the process with that?
So we're in the process of developing a RFQ for that master planner. It's our intent to hire a master planner. We have planned to, to put it out for solicitation in November, so we're trying to stick very diligently to that schedule. So this is the data, what the master planner will do is help us coordinate with the long-range steering committee that the superintendent will appoint, and part of that coordination is doing outreach into the communities with the cities and so forth to educate them on the FCA, and then at some point, based on the will of the board and the community, to prepare for a bond.
Okay, can you just get into a little bit further explanation on the master planner? What exactly, are they, like, so are they looking at each school, and I, I see that there's projected costs? Are they now getting into the details of what exactly would happen at that school?
So, no, no. I think what the master, let's look at the master planner as a coordinator, and coordinate, you know, the district staff will be part of the long-range steering committee. The superintendent will appoint members to that committee. The master planner, steering committee, as well as staff, will work in concert to provide prioritization of projects and so forth. But it's in concert, you know, we're, we're going to have more projects than we have money. And so the reality is that we're, based on the board's preference and the community's will, try to put together a go-forward plan for a bond. We're not going to have resources to close that gap of ten billion dollars. And as I've said, I think as part of my first presentation I made, made to the board, we have already missed a, a, a bond cycle in, in terms of the length of this, of the smart bond. So we have to be very intentional in terms of how do we close the, the gap on the ten billion dollars. Part of this also is working in concert with redefining. Redefining is kind of the umbrella of, and, and this is, the FCA is an input into that umbrella in terms of what our footprint looks like over the, over the next ten years. So this document gives us the ability to look at schools holistically across the district and make those, and the board and superintendent make those decisions on, in terms of how the district will look over the next ten and twenty years.
Okay, how is the facilities' condition assessment different from the needs assessment that was done in two thousand fourteen?
This is an amazing document, and the reason it's an amazing document is because we have collected so much information that we can trust, and this is actual look across the, the vastness of Broward County schools. And so the inputs that we're putting in here are the structural assessment that the board voted to have, and the roofing assessment that the board voted to have, and it's a, a tool that kind of puts everything in one place, and that's something that we did not have. We had separate places, I think, I wasn't here in two thousand fourteen, obviously, but data was Excel spreadsheets and all this other kind of stuff. This is real data that works collaboratively together to give us a real, realistic picture, as ugly as it is, of our district. And so when we talk about ten billion dollars in needs, it's a, it's a real number, and it's a very objective approach, so it's not based on personalization or what I feel, it's based on data.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it's a really important question because we've been dinged on this, and obviously I don't want to repeat past mistakes and, and make sure that we are pulling back the different layers of the roof to, to make sure we're really getting a full understanding of what the roof assessment looks like. And so it, it sounds like this assessment, this FCA, is different, is more cumbersome, and is looking more specifically at the details at each of the schools. It's challenging with the ten billion dollars in needs and how we're going to have that conversation moving forward with the community and, and how exactly it's going to look like as far as, you know, what school is going to get millions of dollars to rebuild that school and where, and, and how that all is going to work out? And so that's, looking forward to understanding that a lot better. And, and so the long-range master planner, so I, I'm just, sorry, I'm just really, I know we're in workshop, I'm really just trying to understand this. Is that a person?
Yes.
Is that a company?
It's, it's a person, and probably there are company attached to it. And so the, the, I've seen various examples of this, but primarily, the, the, the cool part about having a master planner is, number one, their objective. Number two, they work collaboratively, you know, they, they are employed by the district, let's be clear, but they work collaboratively with staff and the long-range planning committee. And so it's a, it's a team effort, and the community outreach is extremely important, and it talks to, you know, kind of what, it is similar to redefining in terms of the outreach and community, and, and just looking at possibilities, and we, you know, when we get close to a dollar bond, but what we can do with this long-range thinking over a twenty-year period of time is say, let's, let's put it in chunks. Let's do, I'm not going to say the number, I don't want to scare anybody, but let's do like a, a one-point-eight billion-dollar bond, you know, this five years, the next six years, let's do a two-billion-dollar bond, and just kind of start reducing that gap. And part of that, too, is, as I said before, the redefining effort and the reality that we have to shrink our, our footprint, you know? And so with that, the number may not be ten billion, maybe slightly less. So all of these factors play into how the district will look, you know, in the next twenty years. Hopefully, I'm retired by then, but in, in the next twenty years. And so it is, it's a very measured approach to giving the board and the superintendent the ability to make those hard, hard decisions that we're going to have to make going, or you, you will have to make going forward.
And who makes up the long-range planning committee, and how often do they meet?
So, great question. We're actually going to send out letters this week for people that we're recruiting, some currently on the FTF committee. Some city managers we're targeting to be on that. It was about timing for us, just to make sure Bureau Veritas got into a good rhythm with their FCA, so we actually have data that they can review versus doing this, you know, early summer and then just sitting around, twiddling their thumbs. So we've had some discussion with some folks that are interested and we feel are going to be a great asset and provide good input for the board to consider, once the master planner comes on board, too, and as Ms. Paul said, working in concert, just to make sure we utilize the data to help make some recommendations for the board to consider that's going to be best fit for our district and also the community at large, too.
So the long-range planning committee does not already exist?
No.
You're in the process of creating it, and how many people will be on this committee?
We're targeting, targeting about ten to twelve people.
Okay, and we'll, I'm assuming have people from all over the district be on it?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rupert.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Alhadeff. I had questions on page five, which is creating a long-term vision for our infrastructure. How does the facilities' long-range planning committee that we have in existence now fit into this equation?
Currently, there is no long-range planning committee. We sunsetted that, I want to say, early summer to build a new one. But how they, how the new one would fit into this is working in concert with the master planner, staff, and also community to utilize that data to come up with some best recommendations for the board to consider as we move forward. As Ms. Paul said, there's going to be a lot of tough decisions. We've got ten billion dollars in deferred maintenance, lot of- We've got $10 billion in deferred maintenance, lot of tough decisions to figure out how we're going to look, not just in five years, again, in 20 years, to really set the district up to be a sustainable and also to have maximum impact for the students here in Broward County Public Schools. But they will be infused in that process as a core part of that process for people that we can trust, people who are familiar with our district, people who are from right here in the, in the communities at large.
Great. And will the Facility Task Force be looped into this as well?
We, so they will, they will get updates, but we're actually targeting a couple of people from Facilities Task Force to be a part of the long-range planning.
Okay, great, as long as they're, they're part of the process, thank you. Then I had on page 19. Appreciate that this is real-time numbers and can happily say that Margate Middle went from a 5.7 to a 5.6. So that was, I know, not normal, but we'll take it. And the same thing, 15.7 to a 15.3. I appreciate that because it's, it's a great little gem. Let me see. 28. There we go. Actually, go back. 26. Okay, sorry. Mixed up here. Okay. We're going to talk a bit about the non-traditional schools and the behavioral, behavioral change schools as well as the alternative high schools. So looking at those, those figures here, they're relatively good in the first-year mark. Five-year, it's still okay. And then you get, you know, pretty much toward the end of life, but still some good years left, especially in areas that would be underserved if we actually had closed one of these schools, or it would be difficult to actually do that. And I look forward to the conversation for updating them down the years as we go. And same thing about Cypress One Education Center. They are in the yellow, and then they get an 18.5 for 10-year run. So that, that's a relatively interesting, interesting building there. But I got to say, Dave Thomas, that's a beautiful campus, really a beautiful campus. It's a beautiful school. I would say that I was a little surprised that the facility numbers were, were like that. Anybody care to comment why? Dr. Hepburn?
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Paul, but before I do, I do want to encourage the board to take a look at the link, the link for the website because it'll give you detail per building. And sometimes a building or two may be super high versus other buildings that may have been renovated recently. When I say recently, probably the past 10, 15 years, that sometimes will, will give you the number that you don't expect because I've been to Dave Thomas, and it is a beautiful building, but I haven't been past a lot of the, the front two buildings to see the others, so.
And I would say, in my experience, that's a, that's a function of, you know, the high-cost items failing, HVAC, infrastructure-type items, but also what the superintendent alluded to, that we need to be mindful when we do additions on a campus and where we put those additions on the campus. Because you have a new addition and then you have an older building that ages over five, 10 years. And so the older building, the, you know, the original building may need to come down, but we have to make contingencies because we put a brand-new building there.
Right.
And so those are always tough decisions, and that, you know, obviously will impact the FCI.
Thank you for that. And I look forward to having these conversations with my, with my colleagues as well as the community at large. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I look at the data, and I guess this is not only for me, but also for public understanding, I don't see an evident proportionality in terms of increase in FCI percentage between years one and 10 among the schools. So I just want to better understand the factors that would, for example, cause a school. Say, on page 28, Dave Thomas to go from .4 to 28 percent. And then you have Seago goes from .4 to 17 percent. And I see that variation throughout. For example, Addicts went on page 22 from 2 percent in the first year, and in 10 years it's 32 percent as opposed to, say, Olson that went from .7 to 17 percent. So there, there's not an evident pattern as to what caused that significant decline in, say, Addicts versus Olson. Is it the age of the building over time? Is it the pattern of building maintenance? And is any of this in our control? I know we're looking forward to possibility of